Okay, so sorry I'm a little late. Good afternoon. On the board meeting, the order is now three oh four.
Hey, Dr. Johnson, District five.
Big fellow, we're here for speaking to.
Dr. Constance, Director of the Superior Intendence.
Director of the District three, and then we have our District two gentleman.
Aaron's Proctor, District four.
Four, I said two. Okay, welcome to our answer, both in person and online. We need a motion for the approval of today's board agenda. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Do we have a hand up? No hand up? Okay, so if there's nobody online.
Should we go to the topics until?
Yeah, okay, perfect. Alright, great. Okay, next is our discussion topics. And first item for today.
Yes.
Oh, right here, perfect.
So. At the last meeting, the school director, the Wassa School Director's Association, they were here as a, what they call General Assembly, would vote on all the different positions that we're going to take as an organization. And then after that society, which was done, fully show, we have a period where each district votes on their top ten. So there's, there's about a hundred and over a hundred and twenty of these positions. So there's a ton of positions and they, they tend to overlap and some of them are duplicative and so forth, but. So we need the deadline for getting the top ten in, it's actually today at the end of the, end of the day today. So what I have done here is put the ones I recommend for the top ten. If you want to get them in, and then the ones below in yellow are things, other ones that I considered. And there's various reasons, most of them are, that it's covered in one of the ones above. The main focus of these synthetic recommendations for Wasa to advocate with the legislature, most of these are funding related, no big surprise, because that's the primary duty or the paramount duty of the legislature is to actively fund. And so, and also given the situation that we're in, funding is such an issue. And so these ones that are, that I recommend to the top ten are, they cover the big areas. So, you know, in our, and if you look at the budget thing, our report, our budget to be approved for this year, you know, the big, the big deficits in general, these are things that we're having to spend local levy money for, rather than having the state spend, which states should be spending, especially education was, is one point six million dollars for that one. The utilities and insurance, eight hundred fifty-five thousand, which is, which is on this list of top ten under, under MSOC, under Spine Operating Cost, that's covers utilities and insurance. Transportation, we're under about eight hundred thousand, and transportation and funding is on the top ten here. So. And also the other ones are covering ones that particularly the equity, there's a lot of equity based ones in here, which we need to cover all the the idea of the few dollars where the needs are, whether it's into back funding or class sizes or whatever. So. And the other big one is professional development. So among, just to, we got some of the ones that were, they didn't, I mean, ten is kind of restrictive, but that first one on the list, African American Studies work group. So that's a work group to develop a statewide African American Studies curriculum, similar to, you know, the Time Memorial is for the Indigenous. And the issue there is actually paying for the, the training that would require. And so that's kind of covered under the professional development one that's above. We've covered that training. The other, the next one down there, under the yellow, attracting Pooda and retain diverse school members. So that's one that, I mean, we could put that on our top ten, but nobody had voted on that one before. And we discussed, or discussed at the last meeting, that probably what would be more effective on that one is for us to sign a letter to the, to our legislators to introduce a bill, which a bill was introduced two years ago to actually allow permanent residents to be on the school board, not just US citizens. And so it didn't, it didn't go through with that here, but it's, a lot of bills require multiple years to, to get them done. And so anyway, my recommendation for that one is rather than put on top ten, which really would do much for us, would be actually, you know, sign this letter and I can hand deliver it to our legislators. And so hopefully get one of them to introduce it as a bill, which would be far better than just doing it on top ten here. So anyway, that's. So if there's any questions around these, otherwise I will just put these top ten in and then in a couple of weeks, I can report back, you know, what the association as a whole did in the top ten and how ours fit into their, usually typically, you know, most of the one, about half the ones that we have in top ten, they could have been top ten in the Wassa collection as well. And so. Anyway, without, just if there's any questions or, yeah.
Just part two, but thanks for explaining the performance, because I was curious why we weren't working on that. Down, down here with the federal poverty rate calculation, that should be regionally adjusted. That would be one of the top, the top ten.
Yeah, so this, these are things that are going to be direct to Wasa primarily with the Washington State Legislature. So that, that particular one would have to be done in Congress and in DC. And. You know, the, I mean, when I look at our funding, like eighty percent of our funding is coming from the state and local and that's what I think that's why. Yeah, that's one, all these ones that are within yellow, Wassa has a position advocating for it. So they will not oppose anything. It's just a matter of which ones kind of bubble up to the actual top.
Right. And then the other one I thought was whether the equitable school funding or boycotts to students impacting their opportunity gaps.
Yeah, and that one's, again, yeah, that one's kind of, if you read it, it's kind of covered by the one above equity based TCO education system. So if you put in, if you allocate money to where the needs are, you will end up, you know, putting it into students that are impacted by opportunity gap. So.
Okay.
It's kind of, yeah, like I say, a lot of these tend to overlap.
One is far and the other I trust your business.
Yes, okay. Okay. Great. And we'll do that, yeah, if you can see this in the, maybe it's in there, I don't know, maybe you can put it in the game.
What is, what is the next step? We can, we can sign all the top, that's okay.
Yeah, the next, the next step on this, the letter I will, if you sign it, I will deliver it to the legislators. Some of them are coming here in a couple of weeks and I'll just hand deliver it. They're going to be talking about, see if I can convince them to fund our. Our quality engagement specialists, the two that work with the, um, getting into students and also our community liaisons, that they're gonna, you know. My approach in this one is going to be to try and see if I can convince them to, you know, fund us for a couple of years as a pilot to show how useful these people really are. And then fold it into the main funding system. They're folded into the main funding system right up. I've had a lot of them in the legislature and they'll freak out at that. But they do like to do occasionally pilots. And so to me, this is really good. And our, particularly our, all those folks, the ones two quality engagement specialists and four mini liaisons now. I mean, they are all very good at articulating what they do. And actually particularly the quality engagement specialists, they watch, I mean, I'm going to make the case, they watch to save the state money because they're kind of watching out for families that may be on the edge of sliding into homelessness and they can provide, they have access to a lot of resources that particularly somebody coming from a new country, they have no clue how to come out of the American system. And they can pinpoint, okay, this, we need this resource, this resource. And then, and they keep them out of falling into homelessness. Then that saves the state of our money. So.
I can see two visits from the representatives, I hope they're coming here. How about those top tens though? When's that going to happen?
Okay, so that, tonight, they go and it's a computerized system and they will rank them all. And I can read back, like I say, in a couple of weeks, what the rank, what the ranking came out of the state level. And then that's what the Wasa strategic advocacy folks, is what they call use to kind of help guide the, how, where they, where they spend their time in the legislative session. The other thing I was, I was going to mention too, was you may have sort of benefited of the board members, you may have noticed you got in the email, some emails to vote on things.
Yeah.
And so the first, there's two sets of things. One is the Wasa officers, like President, Vice President and beyond committees. And all of them, except for two, let's see, except for one, there's only one person. So there's no, but I was going to comment on the one that has two people, which is Vice President of Wasa. The person I would recommend voting for there is Nikki Lockwood. She's, I work with her, she's on the, the board in, in Spokane. And we've been working on some of the equity issues. So she'd be a really good person. So that would be my recommendation for that one. And then the other thing we vote on is so the State Board of Education has, I forget how many people, but some, some of them, Wasa members vote on who's going to be on the State Board of Education. And there's actually, there's one for the, what's called the, the State Board of Education, West, Western Region, seat four. There are one, two, three, four, five people. I don't know any of them, but I've kind of gone through my networks to figure out and hear from people what they thought would be the best person. And so my recommendation there is Jen Jewell. Jen Chong Jewell is the recommendation for that one. I talked to, not only the people in American Conference, who's a former board member here and is actually on the State Board. And she was very enthusiastic about that person. So that would be good. So encourage everybody to vote so that we get our voice on that one. And so, but the rest of them, the rest of them is going on person. So.
We have a similar source.
Okay, that's it.
Any other questions? Moving along, going to the Foster High School reports.
Great, great. And the foster team is here, as well as the Urban League, they're here as well, just a port, so they'll follow up with a little bit of a presentation at the end. And my suggestion, I will just stay seated as a panel and just continue on this fashion. So I'm really excited here. When, if you could, I want to make sure we get all of your names on record. If you could all, we could just all introduce everybody. So starting with you, Dr. Proctor, just introduce yourself and go around, uh, one of the other board members, just so that everyone knows who you are and present them real quick.
My name is Dr. Parker, I'm working with the Department of Education.
I'm Hannah Demond, Director of Student Services and Special Education. I'm Ashley Byrne, and I'm Program Manager for Scholars Program at Foster High School.
Hi, I'm Shender Johnson III, and I'm, excuse me, you can give me a quarter bigger at Foster High School.
That I'm here, I think it's recording at Foster High School.
Robert Jones, VP of the Workforce Development for the Metropolitan of Seattle.
Nasro Kunnatina, Assistant Principal at Foster.
Good afternoon, Andrew Martin, that's what Foster High School.
I'm Scott Lookback, Chief of Accademy Schools.
I'm according to Chief, I'm Chief.
Hello, everyone, here at HR and Technology.
Thank you, thank you all. And so what we're going to do first is we're going to go through the presentation. So this isn't expanded. So every year Foster High School has sent information to the board. Usually it comes around the summer with information on scholarships and on a, we decided to expand it a little bit this year, a little bit more information. And, and also this is sort of like our precursor to the school reports. We have the schools, all the schools come to the district and to the board and they do update on where we are in the school improvement process. So this is a precursor to that, but this is basically the data and information from twenty-three, twenty-four. So last year's work and sort of setting the stage where we're heading for this year. I do want to thank Dr. Proctor, she also assisted with many of the PowerPoint pieces, but I admit, Ms. Parker and I will be presenting tonight. And so just moving to the next slide. Quickly, this is just a strategic plan, the same goals. So just reminder to everyone, high expectations, excellence for all, engaged learners, relationships, equity, empathy. And I love this logo. Okay, next slide. And then this is something that we're trying to put and make sure it's really clear. These are our six goals for the next three years on our anti-racist work. And so I'm not going to go through every goal, we've not done this with staff, but these are the six that we are emphasizing as a system and part of our procedures for anti-racist work moving forward. Next slide, please. And then so in this report, this is data information. So this is a data review on some of the success we've had and some of our challenges. And so I also want to remind the board of two things, three things. So one, Principal Parker's, it's her second year. So last year was her first year as principal, one. The second thing is last year, there was a lot of reorg and reconfiguration that the team has been working on. And then I will, they had to do that again, because they too have lost staff due to the reduction enforced, should we have. And that also impacted some of the college and career readiness. So that's why we have the Urban League to talk about some of those and what they're doing to mitigate some of those challenges. And then just adding that also, we, we talked a lot about the asylum seekers that came in, in flux last year that really impacted our school. We emphasized a lot in elementary because it it would seem heavy at the elementary, but also Foster and Scholwalter also had a large number as well. And they also were impacted on a daily, monthly basis as well. So it was a big influx of newcomers into the system. And, and basically I would say last year was a year, and the board can probably attest to this, of constant recalibration every month. I am glad I'm not feeling like that right now. So, but this is the data in the report moving forward. And then this is just the slide of the overall demographics. And Principal Parker and I, here, she's going to be going to answer questions. And we're not going to read every slide. You'll have the slides in front of you, but this is just the program, school demographics for the year, how many students, gender, race, ethnicity, and our programs and characteristics. And then here, I'm going to stop here for a moment and let everyone read this slide. It'll just take a couple of minutes. And these are the financial aid completion and scholarships for last year. And please, board members, just jot down your questions and then. So high level, just sixty-five percent of the students completed the FASSA applications. But there was also a paper applications due to longer processing times. And we have, they have fifteen students completed the WASSA, which is the state form, which is actually something that our state has because of the fact that, I mean, some of our students don't have some of the legal documentation for FASSA. So that's a gift that our state gives us. It's also, we have to also honor the fact that some of our families don't, still don't feel safe using, I'll just say that's a reported issue. We have a lot of our families that still don't feel safe submitting their application information to even our state data system, because it's still, we track that information. So that is something that we have to always keep in mind as well. And they earned, our, the cohort last year earned two point three million in scholarships. I don't, I don't want to list them all. And then a hundred and twenty-five seniors share the College Bound Scholarship with over five point two million tuition and fees for the next four years. Are there any questions about this slide for Principal Parker and myself?
Well, yeah, first thing, I say that sixty-five percent of students completed FASSA. That's, that's a record. I've been tracking that at Foster High School. We've never been that high before. And that's, that is so critical to our students, because that's what gives them the gateway into post-secondary application. And so many of our students are coming from, you know, low economic or low income families. And the only way they can typically get is through that, through that portal. And so this, we, we tend to be one of the highest districts in the area over the years. Behind Seattle, Seattle's higher because they have something called the Seattle Promise, which guarantees everybody at least two years. And so and we're working on the Tepala Promise. So we'll hopefully our students have that. So that number may even increase. But it's great that it's, it's the, it's the highest percentage I think we've had in, in a long time. I did want to, so I asked a question about the graduation rate for last year. Is it ninety-five percent? Is that the four-year graduation rate or is that?
That's a, that's four-year, that's four-year graduation.
Just before.
That, that doesn't include unconfirmed.
Oh, okay. So I'll say that's, that's another record. We've not been above ninety percent for many, many years. So that's a notable celebration right there as well. And the one, one question I was, I was kind of interested in, so I, you know, I attended the Senior Works Nights for, for many years. And I was, I was curious about the breaking down of the, of the scholarship money by either, by race and by gender. I know, I mean, for many years, recently, the girls have won, I mean, if you see like senior night, you'll see tons of the girls doing really well, which is great. But it gives me a little concern about, you know, what's going on with boys and are we connecting with them properly? So that's why I kind of asked the question. I mean, we typically don't see the broken, broken down by, by gender. That's what I'm concerned about. It would be interesting to hear, to see what it is by, by race. I, you know, the bulk of it comes from the College Bound Scholarship, which I think is, well, I don't know, I've never seen that broken down by race. So it'd be interesting to see, just, I don't know if that's easy to get. I, I can't find it readily available on, on the with internet sites, but is that something, I don't know, do you may have a feel for it? I don't know.
I don't, but definitely something I can look into.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's one thing, it'll take a short, whole time to, to figure out how to get that broken down by race. And maybe you might can talk about timing, how we deliver it. Yeah. Any other questions in the board?
Yes. So my, mine was, we were, I, I love the numbers that were from last year, but we all know that we have staffing challenges. We don't have that point person anymore. What is the plan to make sure that our numbers don't drop or at least maintain it, without having that, that person that's dedicated to this? Because that really seems like that was a big success of how this came. And I remember sitting here at the board meeting, you know, last year, talking about that position. And really, we were having quite an internal debate of, you know, is that going to be impossible? So I'm wondering kind of what your plan is for that.
Yeah, that's really a great question. And the person who was in that role did, you know, a really nice job with ensuring that we were able to meet these numbers. I'm confident with the support from the Urban League that we will be able to maintain, if not increase those numbers. That's my goal. One of the things that we have implemented this year with the Urban League, and they'll share more in their presentation, is we're operating in more sort of cohort model. And so we have each one of the staff members is dedicated to a specific grade. And so they will support that grade level, specifically around eleventh and twelfth grade, the FASSA will be doing several FASSA nights, connecting with families. And then I'll let them share more about how they will be working with their scholars in the building to ensure that we maintain or increase, because that's what we're aiming for.
Yeah, I think actually the, the FASSA sign up, it's not a record. It's higher. What I was talking about was the College Bound Scholarship. Great. That, that was a record. So that's, yeah, I think that's a really key, that's one I, you know, will be looking at to see how effective is the, the new way of doing it. Because that, that's a key number. Percent of the FASSA.
This year, I don't think it's a similar one, so a little bit.
The other thing I understand about last year is the Department of Education screwed up FASSA. And so there was some decline, I think, last year because
About the nation.
The FASSA in the federal government, which hopefully they straighten up. So.
We changed the, we changed the application process. I know, because I built it up. Took a long time.
We also are in the process of hiring our re-engagement specialists, who will support in the efforts alongside Urban League and then our team at Foster. All right, there's just two questions. With the College Bound Scholarship achievement we have this year, and I know you're not less than with the staff wise, but maybe better strategies, I don't know. Can we expect you to match that next, this year or exceeded? The College Bound? I'm, I'm always looking to exceed. So I would say yes, you know, like I said, I feel like we have a core group with Urban League as well as, you know, just gear up being in the building to support. So even with the reduction staff, I feel like we have ample amount of support to that system. And then the second thing is to be, I'm not very young, but I know we were thinking of college from freshman year when I was in high school. And that's only because the family I was in and just the world that I was sent, everybody talked about. We've got these advanced programs, if you want to start early, like the kind of in hospital or hospital. College and also I think there is going to be a full promise. Steve, Steve has been talking about it from a couple of years ago. He achieved a method promise and I believe that it'll happen. So with that, are returning kids up maybe at their high school, are we doing the line, saying this is coming? Because I remember being like, jumping from the fire hose once I started going in my school. You know, I was like, oh yeah, I have numbers to go, I've got my references, kind of updated each year and have, I don't know already, but it was nothing like the moment I got to actually go. And I, I was middle class, I wasn't going for as many things, I was just getting what I could. But a lot of these guys is safer swim. So it would be helpful, I hate to say it, I have almost an after-school club or a friend group. I, I hope you're helping along the way, but what are we doing that really could go loaded for bear?
So just let everyone know, I am the one that oversees both the high school and the middle school. So I have the information for the middle school. And, and so one of the changes Brett made, that, you know, is actually the high school needs on that, that's required for their graduation requirement. And just to remind everybody in the strategic plan, we didn't put it at twelfth grade, we put it at eleventh grade. So it's not required by the state for, until twelfth grade graduation. But we're making it earlier as a requirement for us, because one, we always get an influx of kids, always. That's one reason. The second reason is we want to make sure that we are pushing those expectations earlier, 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 really. So Brett has committed to starting in eighth grade, starting the high school, you know, planning with the students. So that's something that's new to us. So the students coming into ninth grade this year have had exposure to that. So that's one thing. The other thing is that we do in the middle school is they actually are, we actually have Avid in both programs. So there's Avid in the high school and there's Avid in the middle school. And as you all know, that was one of the things we kept as a funding support this year to keep and dedicate to. Love Kids Band, love two, can't do that yet. But those programs are still going, which those are all college-bound type of programs about, you know, organization, those, those types of things. Those are just two of the things that are consistent between both the high school and the middle school. And there's more, but those are the two main that I, I can speak to.
And then the last thing is, are there any gap, there's lots of gaps, right? Or places you'd like to improve that we can help you with, knowing that the restriction is practical? And support, visit, encourage? Thank you for, for that support. And I will talk with my team and we'll, we'll let you know. Thank you.
Great, next slide. And then this is post-secondary enrollment plans for students. And then just to highlight that, well, I, we could meet your. And then this is post-secondary enrollment plans for students and then just to highlight that, well, I think we could meet your uh. Director Proctor, do you have any questions now? Definitely make sure we include them, okay, I'll go to this one if you have any questions, we'll go to them first. And so then the post-secondary enrollment plans, um so um and that's one thing I will say in all the data we're looking at. Our students want to go post-secondary, um so two data points is one, our students want to. But the other one is, most of them actually, not all, but most, want to stay close to home, so those are two. Uh big things that I learned, especially in working with, uh looking at data and survey data from our students. Um but these are, this is the information um of the students to support your institutions after graduation, seventy-six percent of our students. Indicated intentions to attend, attend, um these are the out-of-state universities. And here's kind of that for high school information, so um. I think I'll go to the next slide and then we'll go questions after that. And then, um this is all data, by the way, just to share, we don't have, we don't get. Um the desegregated data, this is some data, new data had the desegregated data we get in mid-December, so as soon as we get that, hopefully we'll be ready. To have that for Foster High School, but um one of the things, the pieces that uh is an indicator for success is ninth grade on track. Um that was a new goal for this year and we did not meet our goal, we probably said it was the first time we set the goal and it was a high bar. Uh hoping that we could achieve it and um so where we're at, actual data is June, it was forty-nine percent of student readers. And on-track means meeting all their credit requirements for that, but that's basically what on-track means, so if you have six. Credit, and this is what's reported through OS Guide, there might be additional data at the school level, but this is what we pulled from our data sources. And then, um and that's something that we've given information and the Foster High School team is aware of. So I'm just gonna stop right there and this uh report here, this disagreement report is actually from twenty-two, twenty-three, this is no sample of what it will look like, but. This is the actual data, uh forty-nine percent uh combined, we're on track eventually, on time, based on the data that they pulled in June. Um questions?
So going back um to the previous one, I, so one of the things that we have in this state is um. The ability to see how our students uh do after they graduate, so the education research data group keeps track of um. You know, where they go to college, do they persist in college, do they graduate and um so it's pulling our data, no big surprise. You know, most about, um most of our students, or thirty-one percent of them, this was from a couple of years ago. Go to Highline College to keep in mind, stay home and then, you know, twenty-five percent go to UW in Seattle and they're staying at home and so. Um and then the others go to a variety of two-year and then four-year uh colleges and we're. We're kind of at uh in terms of um persisting, you know, do they stay after a year or two? We're kind of at a state average plus or minus, um and then how many of them actually get degrees? Again, we're kind of at the state average plus or minus, which given the, the um. Economic uh population we serve is actually pretty good and we're hitting it to say that, I mean, of course we're always going to be better, but. Um it kind of always follows out of the, the track and see what they're doing. And yeah, it's interesting, it's interesting here, this is seventy-five percent in ten, but when you get to how many actually enrolled, it was fifty percent. So there's a gullible gap off there, which is interesting. Um as far as the ninth grade um on track. Um one of, and this is a theory and I'll just put it out there, so our ninth grade actually went down a little bit last year and like. My theory is, you know, coming out COVID, we had some kind of reduction in the uh. Grading situation, so people weren't getting yesterdays, you know, incompletes. So I'm just wondering if perhaps, because the ninth grade kind of went back down to what it was pre-COVID, which it was kind of telling me, well. You know, it's probably just that is what's going on, I don't know, is that, sounds reasonable?
Um that, that definitely does sound reasonable, um one of the things that, you know, we are implementing as a school is our um grading for equity. And really implementing grading practices because uh we do suspect that there is some grade inflation. You know, post-COVID, coming back to school, um but even with uh, you know, the percentage of forty-nine. Um not on track, we're still looking to increase those numbers, you know, last year we haven't increased them. Uh newcomers coming, leaving the school, um and then, you know. Uh scholars who transitioned out of the district, so um I would agree with that.
The other, I'm, I'm looking forward to the, you mentioned the disaggregation of the state because. Before, when we, this was a few years ago, the question, the question on this one always comes up, okay, who's failing, what course? Does that help you figure out where, where to focus attention and I, I can remember from a number of years ago, for example. You know, black students were disproportionately failing science, for example, so that, and I remember asking one or, you know. Student rep on the board who was African-American girl who was really good at science, she's since gone on to get a. After to be in public health, I remember she was watching, I think she got her PhD, but anyway, I asked her, why do you think black students are, you know. Having this issue with science and she just said, you know, robots, she needs to see people, you know, and she aspired for that, so. So I think there's, you know, I, I, like I say, I'm looking forward to kind of getting down into the. To the uh details of which courses and who's failing, because I think that helps, will help us guide where to target the, the information and so. I mean, for example, you know, providing um examples of um black people doing great things in science, you know, that's a relatively. That's, we can certainly do that, so anyway, that's, so I look forward to the, you know, the disaggregation.
I sent the director Proctor, do you have anything to add before, you haven't, we haven't had a chance to talk to you?
No, uh you guys went on past, I was gonna add to the, the conversation about the gender differential in the scholarship applications. I sit on uh chair of about three different committees and I see the same pattern, so when I'm in the schools and I ask and they said, a lot of times the guys aren't willing to fill out the paperwork or the essays. But that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, okay, next, um we'll go to high school beyond planning. So this is something, I'm, I'm just gonna preface this, so. Um we had some really interesting data when I first came on board, Ms. Parker and I talked about that. Um actually, our completion rate was really low in the beginning. So we made this a priority in our strategic plan, in our school improvement plan. Um based on the state data, I think, oh gosh, do you remember what that number was? It was low, we don't have to go into it, it was pretty low. So we did, we made a high goal for this, I'm just gonna state it, we put it high. Because we were going from almost close to like low double digits. And we said, we have to do something, right, and so we put it super high on purpose. As an, as a fact that we're saying this is important, so we did put it at ninety percent with the goal of increasing over and over. Cause I think it was like fourteen percent or fifty, something around there, so, and that was for to full school districts. So we said, we're gonna aim high, which is, usually you don't do that, we go in increments, but we decided this was super important and then we also put the bar one year lower. So I want to make sure everyone understands that, so twelfth grade, we said, no, we're gonna make this an eleventh grade goal. And so that way we are released back, cause what I think more is more important for kids, cause kids change their mind all the time. Like, let's just make it like we all did, we wanted fifteen, we wanted to do this, seventeen, we wanted to do this, twenty-one, you know, even I changed my career. Forty-five and thirty-six, so I keep changing, that's just what kids are, so we decided to. Really focus on the, the, uh the high school completion, also change our current practice as a district in having it started eight, where they start beginning to have those conversations. So I will say that probably in three years, we were gonna see the students coming into Foster already having a lot of this done. So this won't be as big of a goal, but it was a big goal for them. And so I, I actually am actually really proud that you made eighty-five percent, just saying. Um cause we put, we, that was an increase of around sixty, it was over sixty percent of a goal to reach that we, we put it there, so, and it's eleventh grade. Um cause they still, the state requires a hundred percent by um for all seniors, so I just wanted to preface that. Um and but we're keeping, so our goal for this year for the eleventh graders, if we're not judging it by, we're keeping it at the goal of. Um ninety-five percent, so I just want to make sure that people understood the rationale, the reason, the data we had, why we made the decisions we made. And then what infrastructure and goal setting we're putting in, in place from eighth to twelfth grade, to make sure that we receive a. Uh achieve a hundred percent, cause for me, what's more important is for our seniors in another junior and senior year, and I'm sure Principal Parker and her team agrees. Is the conversations, right, and when they change their mind, you know, all those things will linger more, so it's more about the conversation. I don't want twelfth grade to be focused on completing this plan. It's about really, what, what's the next thing, you know, what's the next step, so anyway, um Principal Parker, do you want to add anything?
No, I think you sounded it well, uh and to meet the goal, you know, going into this year, we're planning to also um have. Um Urban League will be supporting with our high school beyond planning, they also have my advisory classes will be supporting, so. We're gonna have um a lot of support uh in ensuring that we're having those conversations and planning, you know, with our scholars this year.
Yeah, I just want me to, people understood the history, the rationale, the reason, and where we're going to come here. Are there any questions about this?
No, good. When you said about changing it along, along the way, that was two years of the physics and engineering and things behind my, I lived in communication. And then I got into my communications career, I switched out of R T, yeah, because things change that fast, systems change that fast, again, as well, right? Wasn't gonna come to do, I was really aspiring in the other areas, I just found my passion in other areas. Um so with that, do they have some kind of sense that we're planning this up? And I heard you kind of say it, but we also teach them, we'll start getting closer to what you're passionate about and help you with those interesting class now. Um but you could have a whole reversal of fortunes along the way, do they know that?
Work, well, again, I would totally, I think those are the conversations, right?
Well, those are the conversations and then that's a great point, as well as the experiences, right? Because unless you have those experiences, uh which, you know, we've been doing an incredible job, I feel like. Providing opportunities through our um community partners and in school. You have to, you know, fill it out and see what you like and then know that it's okay to, you know, wanna change your mind, but let's change your mind. And then have a plan and have another plan, you know, and so just give them permission to do that, but we gotta keep moving.
Right, I think those other skills, like we, so that's the thing that, um you know, Alex and I are part of that education roundtable group. Some of the careers having been, that in the next ten years aren't even established yet, right? You know, AI is changing, things are gonna become more automated, we learned a lot about that. And we also learned too about how some of our certificates that were, were, have actually. Um it's not meeting the needs for the long term, right, so students need to understand that it's a journey, not a destination, right? And so that's, I think that's the conversation, it's a journey, not a destination. I got invited to talk to the football team. And uh it was great, cause I, they asked me all these questions around my career. And I asked, so the first thing I said to them, I said, so how old do you think I was when I got my master's degree? And they all looked at me and they said I was like twenty-five or just made that that concept, right? And I said, no, I actually just had my first child and I was thirty-six. And they looked at their eyes like, what, like what, and I said, yeah. I said, so my, that was my point, was I changed my mind, I was a teacher, I decided to be principal. I went back to school, I still had a child, I could do it, you know, I had some work and I have loans. But it was those conversations, I even, I even said, how do you think I was when I got my doctorate, it, just all those things, and so letting them know. That it's okay, right, to shift uh your career and it's okay to shift and to figure out, you know, and to do it with even more authority or, you know, more support. Um those are all the things, right, and so we're trying to talk about the journey, not the destination, so.
So the, the other thing I, I was noticing in data, this is kind of. It's interesting, there's been a shift, um there's less students going to the University of Washington, Seattle and more students going to Highline. You know, so anecdotally, over the years, I run into students that graduated from Foster High School, you know, after they're out in the world somewhere and I. And I've heard a number of stories where they ended up going to uh, you know, one of the big four-year universities, UW or W S U and. And it just didn't work for them and so they ended up going, you know, dropping out, just going somewhere else and. You know, it's always, being a, a product of me, myself, going to a community college first and then going to the four-year college. It strikes me as a, for a lot of our students, it's probably a much better choice, um both financially and just the size. Maybe when you go up to the UW year in these classes as a freshman, in these classes of four hundred, five hundred, you know, which is. Totally kind of crazy, I mean, it's a great school to go for gra- for graduate school. So I'm, I'm kind of happy, I think, having students think about um. You know, what's gonna be the best choice, maybe a smaller s- school, um maybe a community college, you know. Think about the financial aspects of it all, because um I know some, I've seen some of the offers, they come from UW and they almost always come with. Even, even though the college scholarship wouldn't pay for the tuition, they still have their permanent board. Which is, can be insanely expensive and can put them into a debt situation, which, I mean, I would wish on anybody, so. Anyway, there's, yeah, the whole conversation about the plan and where you go, I think having some understanding too about. What's the right school to pick and the implications of picking this one, so it's interesting, so. They're making it hard, feel good to see that there's more people taking the two-year college, cause I think that's gonna be more. I mean, we don't have kind of data about success, I suspect they're gonna be more likely to be successful on that.
That's a little dovetails into my second question, which uh in, in and out of my career, I've always been um. Either in a job that has junior reputation, which I am right now, nineteen, I'm a manager person who. Uh is a teacher on seventeen, um but I also have always had the backup, you know, female single, worried about always. You know, having imperfect connections on dogs. Uh I'm a professional stage handler, I, I, I honestly level fifteen. And so I have real strong feelings, there've been times where I haven't been protected by unions and some, we're that just great, sometimes no. Right now, opportunities, problems is to help the men at the time, when available, we've done women when I went through high school and college. Um to come where you can actually be a union member, do your work through your journeys. And at the same time, go to night school, go to night school or vice versa. Um and I'm wondering if we're encouraging that thought when we think about young high school, if it still says you can go to college. But what is happening and I find it contagious for a lot of these young people, is they're finishing college and they're homeless, like. Cause they're paying as they go, so food for thought, I've spread that word a lot, I know we have a weird data or we've all. Juniors, but are we fitting that into this high school and beyond plan?
You know, well, that's why our, you know, yeah, that, this is our, our CTE program as well, some of our students should have that certificate. And can work right in the industry, so uh it's not one or all, and just, when I've talked about, for example, I just had the conversation. With Dyckin, right, so Dyckin actually is giving us scholarships for students, specifically joining to that, that, that technical, you know. Multiplicational track, that's the emphasis of those scholarships, they're an H-back company, right? So I think all of those are valid and I, and we all call those post-secondary experiences. That's why I don't say call it, I'll just call it, it's post-secondary, we say that very intentionally. Because our goal is to get our students understanding, like again, it's the journey piece, right, it's not one thing or the other. And it could be, some of our students have done many things along the way, but, but just to have a plan, right, to get in the place of having a plan. And working your plan, right, and whatever that hand and that name is, what is that, and then helping us support you with your plan. We're not predicting to the kids what we tell them what their goals are or what their dreams are, they tell us and then we wrap them up.
Well, last thing is uh. The ironwork is another of the first being taught throughout my career globally, and they rely on a handshake from school systems. From the city, um talking about internships and it's hard, because a lot say young people eighteen would be flying around in certain pens. But I think it's odd that we could have explorers for fire and, and police. Why can't we have explorer programs for all those, yeah, at least nine unions, maybe more inside a city to. Who would gladly like to attract them with the.
That's what's, we'll, we'll look on that.
Yeah, we got, I mean, we have headquarters of the teachers sitting right down.
Yeah, we have right here too, you know.
Yeah, um I would recommend that they get in touch with us for CTE and college readiness, we are revamping and. Doing our CTE advisory board and we do need industry experts to join. Um and so if you have those kinds of connections, that would be wonderful to have.
Yes, okay, thank you for that. Great, thank you. Okay, uh I'm gonna move to the next slide just for a second, we do want to make sure that Urban League has an opportunity to speak. Um next slide, I'm gonna let, actually, Principal Parker speak to that, but I will just share one thing, strategic plan was, we made a goal. Uh with all, uh with all our staff to have a goal, to establish a baseline goal with parent-teacher conferences. Cause we know parent-teacher conferences are critical and actually I'm gonna save it, but I'll let Principal Parker speak, cause they did a lot of work around this. The huge work around this, but I've supported and I've supervised high school, this is our, this is a hard goal. By getting parents, the parents sometimes go a little hands off in high school. Uh they think they can, and and so I know what our goal is, so I just wanna uh say, I'm gonna let you speak to this and the work you guys did behind this.
Yeah, thank you. Um in part, you know, one of the, one of my personal goals um in our school goal is just uh centered around family engagement and partnerships. And we emphasize just with our team and our teachers, uh and I'm sure have visited many of the uh conferences and open houses that um I know from feedback from staff that those numbers were really low historically with uh attendance. And so last year, we uh intentionally partnered with our family liaisons, um our staff, our, we did like call mates where, you know, we made long calls to families as well as um sent, did new messages via um talking points. Um so last year, we were um really pleased with the uh turnout of uh overall uh for conferences and um even starting off the year this year with our open house, uh we've seen.
Well attended.
Yes. We've seen uh six, seven of that, well, maybe you can increase those numbers, we shifted the format of um conferences from uh families going around to classrooms like on the old school, you know, bell schedule, um and we started arena-style conferences. And so we received feedback from families that they really appreciated that format and they felt like they were able to connect with all of their um scholars, teachers. And then, you know, set up tours with the building if that's what they wanted to do, but um we're gonna continue with this number and I believe believe that uh moving forward um through the years, we'll be able to, we are able to increasing attendance.
Thank you. And then I'm gonna go with the next slide. Um the whole, I will tell some questions at the end, participation in advanced course for computer educator program. Uh so this is one of the slides when we talk about uh in terms of improving um our participation rates. Um and getting things like data, we uh, this is one of our goals uh to establish our benchmark data. We're still collecting that data, but uh this is some of the participation rates from um last year in terms of some of what we have here. Uh but I just wanna share that um it's continually our goal. We do have a large body of students um that actually, most of our students are students of colors, you know, but the, what what we're learning is it's really important that we continue to make those a goal, because even if in that, um especially in advanced course for um there still can be some gaps, right? And so you'll, when you walk into, if you see, um but that's, you won't see that full representation in advanced learning or college and high school or those types of courses, um it can be um it's, if if it definitely represents the entire body of the population, that's a problem, a practice we have to address.
So this does not include running start?
Uh it, this one does not include running start, but we can add running start into this. Our goal that we established did not include running start, but we can add it, but that's a recommendation for the board for data.
That's definitely.
Make sure added in under goal uh participation goal. And we'll bring that data, we'll add that in there and get that data. Okay, next slide. And then this one is the role of languages last, and we will be questions at the end. Um so just to add, it's sealed by literacy, this is the data, and then I'll let you just read that slide within that.
So one thing that I've been trying to get for years out of the R D C is, you know, what's the success rate of students that have sealed by literacy? Because, I mean, generally, the the conditional wisdom is that those students have advantages in terms of grade development, and so you would expect it then, but I I've never seen data on that, it'd be interesting. Since we have so many.
Yes, we have a lot.
Yeah.
Our district has a lot. It's great. And the fact that they achieve that highest level is really critical. Okay, I'm gonna go to the next slide, uh demonstrating English proficiency. Um so one of the things that we've been trying to do, and we just established this goal last year um is to, we have, and this was came out last year in our conversation. And this is something that we're gonna kind of, I think, believe, based on the evidence from this year, is really double down on our efforts, not just at Foster High School, but as a team and as a district, because we have so many M L L students. And so being really thoughtful around our exit criteria and making sure our long-term E L Ls are actually multilingual learners are exiting the program. Uh it's a four-year, uh and of course, some students can't, because we have to take into account that we have some students who've never been to school before, or they have gaps in their learning, or they haven't developed fully their first language, those are three things. Or they're in severe trauma, right? Or they might have an undiagnosed learning disability. So those are five things that could impact that. But it's something that we're gonna take a look at more critically through our M T S S processes here at the system, because um we have to look at then what else is going on, which one of these five things, like if it's an undiagnosed learning disability, because that's often what happens, just to, I'm sorry with my going into teaching learning stance here right now. Uh but what happens is oftentimes, uh learning, language acquisition, kind of mass, you know, undiagnosed learning uh disabilities. Right? It just does sometimes, you know, because you're not, is it language development or is it, you know, is it something else? And I think our, uh we wanna err on the side that it is uh a learning, it's language learning. But sometimes it's not, right? And so we have to take more critical and really partner in that. So anyway, so this is the data from um the work for, this is specifically on high school. Um we do a W E A assessment. And so there's a score that for exit uh level four that we exit services. And so uh we actually have uh is uh or a higher on a six-point scale. And so we had the forty-nine Foster High School seniors that took the W E A test, one scored high enough to exit services, so that, so that means that's something we have to work on. But I also will add for last year, I would say differently last year, that our larger number of students that were in level one was really high and took a lot of extra time from all of our schools last year as well. But this is something that we're gonna double down on as a goal for the whole system, is those long-term students in E L L programming uh that have been there for more than four.
And also, it's really hard to do this at high school.
Yeah.
Much easier to do it.
Much easier.
In our first grade, secondary, third grade.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, and I, I don't know, for me, the measure here is saying, actually, that W E A has a better measure, I think it's called growth, are they growing at a rate?
Yeah.
That's gonna get them out, you know, reasonably, and I think that's a better, you know, it's my whole thing about growth.
Yeah, and I agree with you.
If you, if you grow, grow them, they will get, they will be competition if you focus on growing them, so.
Any questions so far? I think those are at the end of my, the slides for Foster, um any questions? My achievement now. Our achievement now. Okay, any questions? But I love the pictures of the girls, so we'll just keep it there.
Yeah, a couple of other questions. One is, so at the um open house, which I've done, and I confirmed it was like, yeah, a lot of uh once it got going, I think the arena stuff turned out to be huge. Um was one of the parents asked me about homework, so she, this is incoming, she had incoming freshmen and then she was kind of astonished that she was in a classroom and that there was no homework assigned and the, and I've asked this question before and the kind of justification was, oh, we have students that don't have a quiet place that they can study and so we're so a sin equity issue and um on the other hand, I've heard, you know, students have asked over the years for could we, you know, have extra hours to the library on weekends and on the evenings, so that they can have a a place to study in case they don't have a situation in their home life, or they can do that, so. Anyway, that whole um subject of, and I, I guess, so there is no kind of school-wide policy on that, so sounds like individuals, uh teachers do um what they think is right, but the concern from the parent was, you know, well if we, you know, I mean, when you go into the post-secondary, you're gonna have work outside of, with passion, certainly. And so how do they kind of get those skills and that motivation? And it's an interesting discussion to have, I don't know what exactly the answer is, but I just, you know, I wanted to bring it up since a parent, you know, I had that had that concern, I don't know, do you have any, is there any discussion going on in Foster about homework in general and the whole?
Um yes, there have been, and I think I also um engage with that uh parent as well. And again, I think it goes back to being an equity issue with homework, right? So traditionally, some of the followers who complete homework may have families at home who can support them with homework um help them work through problems while others don't. And so when you are um providing homework or extra credit or those kinds of things, that does create an equity issue, because then, you know, we're gonna increase based on that. Um which is one of the reasons why we are um moving towards our equitable grade. And so with that, you know, all of our grading policies include um retakes and opportunities to demonstrate your learning. We do have after-school um homework club uh on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and so we always invite, you know, scholars to that if they're not able to finish their assignments in class. Uh along with them, if there are larger projects, you know, that are required, but again, there's in-class time um allowed for that, and then if not, you know, we encourage scholars to come after-school or there to support um if they need a help, but um all of our teachers uh, as we've been meeting over the last few years, we just we don't feel like homework is necessarily, uh doesn't necessarily equate to uh learning or increased improvement in grade.
Yeah, especially if it's, uh it depends, I'm looking at, we have, there's actually a policy for homework and it basically be the to the school and the principal to decide what to do, but I mean, they're, they're gonna be evaluated if it's done well and then, but if it's, yeah, if it's an ethical issue. Um the other thing I was interested in was the um, so last year at the City of Tech, uh you know, we had this whole thing or giving our Chromebooks to a lot of students and um so that, that's been going on for a year and I'm just, I'm just curious as to you know, what you're seeing, the the impacts of that, are we seeing? Um I guess, let's see what you say, four, oh, one hundred and thirty-two students at Foster got those, which um the idea is to give them high-quality inter- internet access outside of school and in their home and uh I think, if I recall right, the decision about who got them was geographic, is that true? Because those, those, the back that points were certain, at certain places in Tewa.
Yeah, and you know, I believe that was my first year when I started, that that Chromebooks uh were distributed. Um to be honest, I know a lot of the Chromebooks were lost. Um that were, were sent home, you know, due to relocation and and things like that. Um so I really don't have a pulse on how that's going, because we still have Chromebooks available and we need to find them out. If um, you know, there's any to work on a project at home or something like that, but uh that's, that's all I know as far as the hundred and thirty-two that were, that's fine.
I guess that was my other question, was was there any goal for replacing or maintaining them, like, is that in-house or, oh, it is in-house? Okay, so I, yeah, I mean, I guess we gotta figure out whether this is working for the students or not, and why isn't, or if it isn't, um I mean, there's a big deal maybe of that and um it seemed like it is.
Well, we have, we have a thing in the city, we'll have some, the other learnings that we've had with that, is that some of the parents have actually you know, it's been, the the Chromebooks are becoming family Chromebooks too, so that's the other thing that happens too.
Yeah.
And that's the thing, is we have families, parents, right, they have to play their job, things like that, and um so that's part of the trade-off, right, so.
But my understanding is they were set up so that only Google classroom.
Yeah, it's for kids, for kids.
Just go where I want.
No, I know, but they're for kids, but, you know, hot shows in some families, so.
Yeah, oh yeah, so.
Maybe that's something, maybe when we have the I T report, that maybe we can have them come up and give a report on that project. So that's a partnership with City of Tewa, thank you.
And the last one is, I'm interested in this uh, the co-teaching model that I understand was uh you're using I guess, some of the math classrooms for for M L L students. I'm curious about how that whole model is going, I was looking at our, um and this is probably, I don't know which classrooms they're in, of the math scores for M L L students last year were basically the same as the previous year, but that's tenth grade math and so the, the I don't know where the co-teaching was going on, whether it was going in in ninth grade or whatever, and I'm just, I'm really curious about that model, because that's a model that I've seen work well at some other schools and it's, it's a good argument for, with the lift station for giving us more money, so we could afford to do that, co-teaching is expensive, obviously. But, so I'm just curious, what's your, what's your sense of how that's going, where, is it, is it being used just in math?
It's basically math, science, uh English, all of our core.
All of the core, right. And what's the sense from teachers? I mean, the other thing I just, I told, I talked to somebody at the, that's my colleague Val, you've been doing um teaching relations to special education for a number of years and, and she's saying, well, like, it works fifty percent of the time, because the teachers are kind of, you have to work both together, and that's not always the case, some teachers do well, some teachers don't, so I'm just kind of interested in, is it viewed as being successful or?
I would say.
Sometimes, yes, sometimes not.
For the most part, yes, when we started out, it was, it was a little bit rocky, I think we were able to get our bearings and um really intentional about having our teacher plan
Right.
um with the content area teacher and uh focus on uh specific case load. And so they've been there time planning, they're doing a lot of time side-by-side uh teaching models. It does seem to be successful, we're hearing um uh our fellow D A M R teachers um that they appreciate the support in the class and with building of connection with the followers who are coming in um who have different um needs, language uh barriers. Uh it's, it's been successful, and I see it uh improving um as we continue to develop that the model.
So it's like maybe a couple of years before we actually maybe see something in the quest bars, because people are still kind of keeping their way.
Yes, I would say a couple of years. Um and last year, you may be aware that we mentioned, like, for example, math, we have our uh ninth-grade teachers um teaching math and during advisory, uh we moved them up to tenth grade this year so that we can see it reflected, see that change reflected in the data, and so we also have our co-teachers in those classes. So I'm expecting, we're expecting to see um improved outcomes.
Okay, great.
As long as I can say, I'm sitting here smiling, because I was the spare the in the co-teacher for many years at school, five years at school. Um and it's about the common waiting time for both, it's also about sharing the power and control of the classroom.
Right.
Um and yeah, mainly it's about him getting both teachers to have more than, you know, common planning time. The more time they have for collaboration, the more successful it is. And then the greater the impact on those follows. And then I was just quickly going to read Mrs. Parker, so we have two M L L coaches at Foster and we have specifically designated one coach, they, they both teach a few sections as well because of the um staffing, we hope they can be creative, but you assign one M L L coach specifically for math. She's supporting the math teachers and scholars, and so we hoping to see some success. Especially in algebra one.
Yeah.
Where our language and I P's follows, that's trouble.
Well, that's, that's just a foundational subject to kind of everything.
Any other, someone take that to the project, do you have any comments on the high school report referring to Urban League? No, okay, anyone else? Okay, let's, okay, so Principal Parker, I'm going to do certain needs for our conversation.
Oh, I'm so excited to introduce um the Urban League, we have Ashley, Shendre, Demony and uh Rob Jones uh from the Urban League, and they're going to share um some of their successes from last year and then talk about uh goals um for this upcoming school year, in order to think that.
All right, well, I'll just start with saying that um it is a, it's a bit much, we're gonna try to go through it as quickly as we can, um just to have a highlight um the projects, um programs that we've been doing um last year and that we're gonna continue throughout this year, and then we'll end with goals and upcoming events that will be happening throughout Foster up until the end of this, this year, twenty. And then we'll end with goals and upcoming events that will be happening throughout Foster up until the end of this, this year, twenty twenty-four.
Well, good afternoon, everybody, uh, the first highlight I would like to bring to the table or bring to the board for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Is last year we took uh twenty students on a college tour uh from Foster High School and Barford High School. And we called it the Down South College Tour. We took them to these following universities, Tulane, Xavier, Brambling State, Jackson State, Southern LSU and Alcorn University. Leading up to this college tour, we made sure that they were well-prepared and exploring and intentionally being ready for this college tour. While their students were able to explore the city and the richness of the culture of New Orleans. Uh, we wanted to make sure that they were properly, properly handled. And this year we plan on going on another spring break college tour and we're gonna be focusing on the D and B area.
And so in addition to that, we have a number of clubs, sorry, uh, one of the clubs that we have here, this is our third year that we're gonna be having there is Youth and Gov. Um, our Youth and Gov program is in conjunction with the Y N C A, um, and it's really just about student advocacy, helping them understand. Um, their voice and how they can get um involved in local government is hopefully, you know, and beyond. Um, so part of that is that we help them to create a bill and then doing the May session with. Senators and House of Representatives are out on vacation, um, for a week, we go to Olympia. And we go in, sit in those seats and we have students from all over Washington State come and argue these bills amongst each other. And kind of, you know, put on the show of what it would be like to be a house and senate and pass those bills amongst them. Um, so this, you know, we plan on taking up to twelve of you, for the past few years, we've taken, um, I think the most we took in seven. So they should, we plan on taking up to twelve to Olympia.
Also, I would like to bring to the table to us the Black Student Union. Last year was our second year being Black Student Advisors. Uh, we helped coordinate the Black History Month Assembly, which is every month in February. And last year we served about ten students consistently throughout our school programming and school year during the summer as well. This year our focus is more getting, getting more active members and making sure that most time activity and field trips are a part of that as well.
All right, so the next one I'm gonna focus on is really about uh about active school supports because much of our programming um is after school. Um, just because there are then of course to divide any time. Um, so we have skills programs, which is mostly focused on like the health and beauty. Um, because we understand that it's a growing industry, you know, esthetician, makeup artists, hairstylists, um, nail tanks, that is a growing. Um, line of career, and so our skills programs are focused on that. Last year we did a nails program, we did a hair program. And this year we're looking to do a makeup program, again, focusing on the career pathways like a makeup artist. Another thing we did last year was National Day of STEM. We understand STEM is a growing industry and so we want to engage our students in STEM. And so we participate in a nationwide with other Urban League um affiliates to present out about STEM programs that they're doing in their community. Um, and this year we are going to be partnering up with uh Mr. Camacho, Jimmy Joe is the environmental teacher there. And we're gonna talk about um the preservation of coal hoast salmon, um, and efforts that are be doing here in Tepola. There's an event happening on October nineteenth where they're gonna be doing those things, we're gonna be going out with um some students from Foster High School. And um collecting information about those efforts and then we're gonna also present out on the national league, you know, which is on over the A. Um, this summer, which is probably our biggest program where we interact with the most students is Summer University. Um, this was our fourth year, I believe, um, where we did Summer University. Um, and so this year we, they're intentional about focusing on rising juniors and seniors. And we did a training program focused on college and career readiness. And we just helped them to, you know, create a draft with a personal statement, talks about financial aid, talks about the college application process. And we also did for our ending project, the shark tank pro- project, where they would have to do in groups of four to five students. And they created a innovative um product or service and then we had community members come in and judge their project. Um, and we top three got extra money on their check because these programs are stipend programs. And then in addition, we had teaching, um, this was a cohort of about eighteen students, many of them were like incoming freshmen. And so it was like a leadership development program, um, that was um. Post, I mean, the person that was over it was Coach Holt, uh, which is the uh co-chair for the football team here. Um, and in addition to that, there was a STEM component where we partnered up with UW Vila. And they came in and then taught the students virtual reality coding, um, for again another six, six-week session. And the last part of our summer program was our college bridge program. This is our second year that we've done this and it's basically a college preparatory program for seniors that are entering into their first year of college. And we just helped them to be college, we talked about financial literacy, talked about the importance of internships and scholarships and networking. As they're going throughout their college career, um, and we just helped them to just be prepared for that. We even did like a um grocery run to SARS where we gave twenty-five. They had to do uh a week's worth of bills for twenty-five dollars, they'll go understand, like, you know, sometimes we politicians will be in struggle, you gotta learn how to. Manage your time and manage the money. And so we ended with a celebration where we invited uh professionals and students in their respective industries out to lunch with them. And we partnered them up with them and allowed them to have just open discussions about what is the life to work in this field and what, what are tips and. Um, things that you would want me to do if I'm busting into this industry, so um, students really love that, that's the highlight of it, they love that they get to speak. Someone who's already done what they're looking to do, and so this year we plan to once again do college grades and hopefully. Uh, multiply those numbers, cause in the past couple of years, we've been serving up to twelve of our students, um, that are both going to in-state and out-of-state schools.
After that, we have after-school programs, we had a web design and a coding uh program, last year we held, uh. Last year we held web design in the first semester, so eighteen students in partnership with UW Vila. Uh, in the place, we grew form groups and assigned to local bi-fi business to help them create a website if they didn't have one already. And then our second semester, we held a coding program where twenty-five students were introduced to basic programs coding such as Python, websites, coding for web pages.
And um, so last year we uh, well, the year prior to that, we did like a grad night, um. And this is where we take students that are graduating to go to California, to go to um. Walk Disney World, no, Disneyland, sorry, California's Disneyland. And um, it's a, a bunch of schools come back to these grad nights, so there are like hundreds of other students and basically they, we have like. Free fall and we're there at like one in the morning, and so it's just a really great opportunity to connect with students and just celebrate, you know. That next step of graduating from high school and going off to their next uh career pathway. And so we plan on doing that again this year, Foster recruiting some students to, you know, come in, come with us and, you know, anywhere from thirty to sixty. Um, students, hopefully we can, they can come out and celebrate with us.
Another highlight I would like to bring to the table is uh our U- Youth Leadership Summit. For the past three years, we have taken ten to fifteen students to Leadership Summit with students from the Urban League affiliates nationwide. This past year, the Youth Leadership Summit was in New Orleans, Louisiana, and students stayed on Xavier University campus for all the five straight days. During this Leadership Summit, students were able to participate in these following activities, STEM activities, leadership, building activities, community service. Local school tours and class group visits, along with financial literacy workshops and team building activities. This year for the Youth Leadership Summit, we will be in Cleveland, Ohio, and we look forward to taking some more foster students to that Leadership Summit.
Yeah, and each year they always stay on a college campus and that's a great experience for students to like, you know, touch and feel like. What it's like to live and breathe on a college campus beyond just visiting it and leaving. Um, so let, we're gonna end with goals that we have for this year and then upcoming events um that we're doing. So one of our goals for this year is um to highlight again the FASA completion. Uh, we are wanting to get that goal up to ninety percent completion. Um, last year, as you said, sixty-five, so you know, we have a lot of work to do. Um, but the way that we are going to be doing that is of course partnering with Gira and um hosting a number of financial aid nights and stuff. So we have what actually coming up here on this Thursday at six P M, we're inviting students and families out. Because despite it's not opening to December the first, it's important to get that FASI D complete and all the information, so once the portal opens. Then just hit submit and be good to go, so we're gonna be doing that. Um, but we're also gonna be working with our counselors, um, one thing that we're doing this year is we're meeting monthly with our counseling team, Gira and Urban League. Um, to really sit, sit, focus on how we can support our seniors. Um, so counselors are gonna be doing senior uh meetings, one-on-one, and they're keeping a spreadsheet of all the students they're meeting with, of all the supports that they're meeting. And also tracking if they have completed their financial aid, and for those that have not, you know, Gira and ourselves will be following up with them to make sure that they. If they need any assistance, if there's any barriers that they experience and why they have to complete a financial aid, we can work with them to get past that. Um, our second goal is to engage with students in the College and Career Center, um, at the lower class, the freshman and sophomore years. Uh, because we don't want the idea about the College and Career Center is that, oh, it's for juniors and seniors, I don't need to go learn something. We wanna start engaging them earlier to get them in the mindset that college is something that you can do, trade school is something you can do, that's what you wanna do. And if not, let's get you some skills so that you can go out to the workforce and make yourself marketable. So our intention this year is I'm gonna be doing a lot of targeted events specifically for freshmen and sophomore. To get them attracted to come to the College and Career Center, so that once they hit the junior season, they're already familiar with this, they're already familiar with the expectations. And it'll be less work to have to get them to do the things that they need to do in their junior senior year. Um, our third goal is to increase the high school completion, um, beyond what. The goal here is ninety-five percent, and we, of course, are gonna, you know, get on board and help these get to that goal as well. Um, one of the strategies that we do is with our programs, all those programs, have we just mentioned, I would do. We make high school completion as a part of the requirements be in the program. So in the orientation, when they fill out paperwork, we then, you know, hey, logging to Zillow, let me see how many assignments you have done. If not, by the end of this program, that needs to be complete in order for any stipend or anything like that to be provided. So we will continue to do that in addition to just, you know, as we call, people are coming to the College and Career Center and just making them aware of that requirement as well. And lastly, our goal as organization is to case manage eight students. Um, I think Miss Parker spoke about how we are doing like a cohort style, so I'm gonna be with seniors. Um, Shendre is um freshman and sophomore, and Stephanie is juniors. And our goal is that for each grade level, we're gonna be case managing twenty students specifically to help them to um get to that scholarly level. Um, and this is not just for students that are already working, but this is for any student that is just needing that additional support. And that individualized support to help them to do college applications, find out about internships. Um, get ready for a job in the workplace and find mentors in their field. Um, so the upcoming events that we have for the month of October, again, I want you to know that we have some FASA nights coming up. So we have about two FASA nights this um month that we're gonna be doing um with um Gira. And then we're also gonna be taking up to fifty students up to the national, um, okay, it's called Nat. I don't, I forgot what the acronym stands for, National College, anyway. It's a college fair, it's gonna be at the Seattle Convention Center, and we plan on taking fifty juniors and seniors up there so they can again. Get that college exposure, start talking to recruiters, finding out about what these schools require us on, what programs they offer, and that's just gonna be a half-day field trip. Uh, and then in November, um, we are gonna be doing a number of events. So one of the events that we're doing is that we are partnering up with the Army, um, they have been coming and speaking to students in classes and stuff and. Many students are um expressing interest in the Army, so we're gonna take them to the Army for an all-day field trip. They're gonna be transporting their students and of course, we're gonna be chaperoning alongside them, but taking them to the Army base, letting them know about aviation program there. And also just touching and seeing what it's like to be on an Army base and the life um and the career possibilities in the Army. Um, but we also be doing um college signing days, um, with three colleges and I hope to see some of the enforcement that's there. Cause I think it's a great opportunity to engage with our students, um, but they are gonna be onsite signing day, so that means that um colleges are coming out. The co- uh students fill out the application and if they meet the necessary requirements, they're able to get accepted on the spot. So the schools that are gonna be hosting that is gonna be Central Washington University, Eastern Washington University and Washington State University. And that is the week of November the eighteenth, so um it's gonna be from eleven to twelve-thirty. So I hope to see something going there because I think that.
I'll get it on their calendar, consider the date.
I think it'd be great to see that support from the community out there, you know, accomplish something so great of getting accepted to a higher university. Um, and lastly, in December, um, we are going to again, finish out with this one, these uh financial aid nights. Um, because again, December the first, and they only have a couple of weeks in December for the board to um Christmas break. So we've been wanting to get as many students as possible in the first two weeks of um December to finish that. So that when they come back in January, they can not have anything else to wear on college except waiting for acceptance letters to start rolling in. Um, and then we're gonna end it with a Smart Wednesday college trip, cause we really try to always do something on the Smart Wednesday. To engage the students, you know, because nobody can be in school, so we're going to go and visit South Seattle um College. Um, they have a lot of great trade school programs there and uh they're gonna be allowing us to do interactive things in their mechanic, in their aviation. Uh, programs and it'll be really fun, we've been there before and our students loved it, so they're happy to go back. But that's it, I'm done.
That's a lot. Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, um, so tell me, explain to me a day in our life of you guys at the high school, how often are you in front of the kids? I heard, and I heard different things, so I heard, um. You're taking students, it's kind of a two-part question, so I'll need that kind of so I can understand what your guys' day looks like where you're at, serving Foster. And then I heard you say Garfield and other, you know, that are there, so when I hear you taking twenty kids or thirty kids, is that twenty or thirty foster kids? Or is that kids from our community, including Garfield and other schools and us?
Okay, um, so to answer your first question, what is the day in the life look like for us there? So it, it varies based on the role, um, so. Overall, um, we are open to the College and Career Center during lunch and after school, we try our best not to take students out of classes. Um, but we also have them going in and supporting classes as well. So um, right now it's just one period, but they are helping to support teachers that, you know, may have classes that are a little bit bigger. Just to have that additional support and stuff like that, um, that's one aspect, but during.
So I'm just quick, sorry, so I'm here every day, you're, you're there every day at Foster?
Yeah, so we're there, Sundays and Fridays, eight to four-thirty.
Okay.
Um, and once programming starts, we'll be there until about five o'clock. Um, but um mostly during the day, we're doing a lot of planning, um, as running starts, students sometimes come and get support, so. Um, you know, we're allowing them to come in when possible to just talk about college or anything like that. Um, during lunch is primarily when we interact with most of our students, so um we do a lot of um tailing me during lunch. Where we're interacting with them, whether it's games, whether it's telling them about programs we have going on, um, supports and so forth. So we do our best to try to, you know, promote our programs during that time and also be in the College and Career Center during lunch. So if students are needing supports, we can do so. Um, and then after school is really the prime time where we're doing our Foster Scholars Program, which is a four-day-a-week program. Mondays and Wednesdays, we're focusing on, you know, doing homework and catching up on class assignments. Thursdays, um, Tuesday and Thursdays are our program days, so all of these programs that we talked about, we try to do those um primarily on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, so that's vastly what our day looks like, but again, it just varies, it's just based on what we have going on. Because like I said, we're sprinkling in field trips, we're sprinkling in, you know, um, going out of town with students and stuff, so it can vary. Um, the second part of the question was um Garfield, like those two school sites, so. We are currently at Garfield and Foster, and so whenever we're going out of town, most rounds, we try to integrate both schools together. So we're taking thirty students, we're trying to say fifteen at Foster, fifteen at Garfield, but it just really depends on the level of like people signing up. So sometimes it may not be even split, it may be more Foster and less Garfield, but, yeah.
Thank you for the question.
I love you.
Yeah.
Well, after that, so when we say we're at Foster, these three are not at Garfield. We have a different staff that facilitates at Garfield, so this staff is here one hundred percent of the time. Okay, and so the other thing that, uh, I think just due to the sign language mention is that the College and Connection Program, so when we're doing. The Monday and Wednesdays about homework, we also put the College Connection.
So when we're doing the Monday and Wednesdays about homework, we also put the College Connection piece, so it's about. Uh, and so I'm not sure if you agree with the Watch College Program, but this program is very similar to the Watch College Program because it's affecting kids to college. Right, and so we're doing the letter statement, we're just doing the application, right, we're helping with the FASA, so that's part of that uh cohort model. Now, to understand that too, is that yes, they have a whole model, and yes, they have a number of kids, but they're also serving the whole school. Right, so it's not just about just the youth that come in, that's the twenty that they have, it's the whole school that's being served. Right, in the same model, right, so everything that we do for, you know, the cohort we do for the school, right? So the FASA for the school, the college for the school, we have college presentations um that they do, that's for the school, right? And so everything that we do is holistically serving the whole school body population uh for Foster.
So how do you, the, the, you said twenty and a cohort, how do you, how do you select the twenty?
So how we select that is, we, honestly, we don't select it, the students select us. We go out and we promote the program, and we say, hey, these are the supports that we provide, we'd love for you to be engaged and interact with us. And as we promote it, students are able to sign up. We have a flyer, they sign a QR code, and then once they do that, we then reach out to them. They extend the invitation for them to come and fill the paperwork out into, we have like a scholars agreement about certain things that they will do to be in the program. And that's it, but it's not more so, you know, uh selecting them, but really just selecting them. And we don't cut it off at the twenty either. That's the baseline, you know, definitely, we wanna be serving, um, because again, this is just a more individualized thing, much like you said, we're still serving the whole school. For those students who feel like, I really need more one-on-one support beyond just the school-wide supports that you guys are providing.
So, so you will take whoever signs up, and then there's not a waiting list or something?
Yeah.
I also wanna just add, um, it's actually, it sits on our MTSS team, and so as we have scholars who come up with the team, they're also referred uh to the program.
Yeah, that was my other question, like the re-adiation specialist, you know, they can refer people.
Yes.
Yeah, so I wanna make sure.
It says what space in the building is provided for them, who is the point person the program will be accountable to, for the deliverables agreed upon. And then will the program have a rep at FHS staff meetings? Yeah, um, thank you Director Proctor. So currently, the Urban League occupies the College and Career Center in the school. And um they report to me, so I work very closely with them uh in the building. And they also attend our uh staff meetings as well, so we really have integrated them in the school. And, and they're a part of the foster community, so they're there all day, every day. And I think it is of the MTSS structure, so MTSS is multi-tiered systems of support. So that's the structure we were talking through. If a student is maybe struggling, or they're having a problem disconnecting. Trueness, whatever discipline, uh MTSS structure is like an intervention program, but. Where the, a team of experts in the, in the building come together and review all the data, and especially, it's on the, it's on the student level. Um, just like we're doing at the school level, they do it at the student level, and that's where, and I'm hearing that Ashley, you're part of that, which I think is critical. Because then you ensure the service, all that there's not duplicative services, and reassuring services are. The correct services are being met, because they offer many, many different type of programs, so making sure you're supporting the student in the right way. So.
One of the things I will add too is that because, and I'm not sure you all agree with Urban League, but we have a very robust. Housing, right, uh avenue department, this is just one part. So I operate the education and workforce, right, and so this is just one part, this education. Uh, we're in several schools, right, Garfield, Roosevelt, Grand Beach, Franklin, Foster. Uh, and so we also have a workforce development part where the career pathways component comes in. And so we like to say that our programs are college and career pathway connections, right? And so we bridge the gap from the night grade and barriers, social, emotional, right, all the way through. And then not everyone goes to a college, not everyone wants to go to a career pathway, but we connect them because we have a program. About youth merit, not career launch internship that we have, where we connect them into internships, we have cybersecurity internship. We have a jumpstart King County internship, so these are things that if they're not necessarily connecting with college, we have direct programs. That are able to, uh, have workforce that we can connect them into, right, and those folks are also coming in, we do a certain. Uh, enabling days, and so we let youth know about these different opportunities, but also for the families. Right, depending on, and that's why it's important up there at those meetings, because where the school district is unable to serve that family, we sometimes can't. Right, so we do housing, rental assistance, moving assistance, uh mortgage assistance, or parents assistance. Uh, the foreclosure prevention, right, uh, we have a homeless shelter that we operate. Uh, for youth eighteen and up, it's eight PM, eight AM. We also have a young men's shelter, eighteen to twenty-four, that's the nine bear house right across from Black High School. Uh, where they have their own rooms and to finish their living, and so there's a lot of things that, that I have um connected youth with. Uh, currently I, I serve as one of the football coaches for Foster High School, uh, and so we, you know, there's a lot of things that we've done, right? Um, not just um with serving the kids with these capacities, but this challenges and bear removal of health. Right, providing meals or assistance to a lot of the things. We also have a uh mental health uh contractor. Where we're contracted with a mental health provider, because one of the things when I worked in the previous, the referral process is so lengthy. Right, and so if this individual does, they come in and they stabilize the individual for long-term care. Right, and so able to work with them until we're able to get a long-term care provided. So we do a lot more than just providing, you know, college applications and FASA, but we serve the whole child and the whole family, right, in a lot of these cases.
So are, are parents aware of this um possibility to sign up for this program in case, you know, first might need a little badge to get into one of these programs?
Yeah, so that's part of what we're, last year we had a little, a smart part because the way our funding works. And so this year taking, and this is all the things that we've done with all of our kids, right, this is what we do as a service. And so now, when it's like, hey, we have the Career Center, and we're gonna take on a whole school, and that's fine, because we're already doing it. Right, and so that was about, you know, as we're talking with a lot of families, so. We've had influx, I think you all know the families were cool, right, a lot more families have been around, so we talk to them on that aspect too. We also share, you know, saying families, and they were at the open house, and so we're getting it out to the family. Uh, one of the things that we're planning uh for Christmas is a holiday party, and I think specifically for Showwater and Foster. That we're gonna serve families, right, at both schools, right, for gift giveaways, right? And so these are just, you know, so that it gets out, right, to the family. Um, and then we also know that information to families, um, even if it's written, it's written as email, they don't all even read it. And sometimes it's just having a conversation, and I think a lot of that movement has happened through the athletics, right, and through our presence in what we're currently doing.
I got a comment, uh, and maybe a question. The comment is, uh, your, your reputation precedes you, you're big with this, and glad you introduced that, that you're in community in so many ways, even now under. Safe, uh safe for guns, there you were, right, you're doing things, thank you for your follow-up on the football program. Um, the Black Student Union, I used to come, I was a vice council member to join online during COVID, and it was thriving, and I hope it grew. After, um, with your assistance, um, the kids know to come to you, are you the, like, the cool, what the cool kids are doing? I mean, I know that sounds funny, but it actually matters at that age, right? And I meant to leave them.
Yeah.
Um, uh, how do you know whether you're the magnet, the kid magnet that you should be? Youth magnets, scholar magnet that you should be?
I would say for me, I think it's just the stuff that we're doing on listening, it's a lot different than on the norm, right, and they see that. Um, you know, I've, I've been, you know, my daughter's a cheerleader at Garfield, and so I've been, you know, getting better than the schools, even though my role. I continue to strive and be in the schools, right, and I think it's just the program, you know, when you say visiting grad night, right? That was something that, you know, I brought to the table, like, hey, we're gonna do this, right, because it's different. Right, because, you know, these kids and all the kids that have never been, right, that number of kids in Foster that were there that have never been to visit one, right? You know, I think after, I know you've been on a plane, right, so to, to, I think that's the thing, when you start to do those things. You start to, cause you know, it's, it's not, I always say, it's not about what we, it's about what the kids say, right? And when the kids are talking, right, that's when you know you're being effective. And they are, and when you show up every day, that's one of the reasons why the model that I went with is embedded in the school, right? Is because when you're there every day and you're consistent, and they see you every day, right, that's the connection, right? And so when they see, you know, me in the building every day, the, you know, kids on the team, you know, they come by the office, they're, you know, they're there. I'm starting to know other young folks that are in the building, right, and so it's just consistency, right? And there's some kids that I don't even know their names just yet, and I come in and they're always waving and, you know. And I think the law is that move to when I'm walking. You know, so that could be part of it, but that's what we do, is, you know, we bring snacks and we have things, and we really are trying to create a. Even though we're here in this learning environment, we're trying to create a different kind of learning environment for them, where they feel, you know. Safe and confident, and, you know, when they come into the space and they know that there's supports here and there's people that, that care, right? That, that actually care about who they are, and not just their, them in the building that day, but there will be, you know, when you talk to them and say, you know, how's the social order? How's my building, or, you know, cause you hear these different stories, right, of things that are going on, that one, you know.
Well, I know that I pull it in, I'm trying to get on November eighteenth, I might be a little funny, gonna, gonna have some leg surgery here, but. I will try to make there, just gonna bring in the coons in my whole day. Sorry, sorry, Director Proctor, just had to grab onto that. Um, but are there other ways that um board can support you in ways that board is unaware of, that you just go, wow, I wish. They do this, or have this roadblock, and then they will just unblock that road?
Wisdom one class? The, the mentor, I would say, that would be good one.
That's the one we were talking about when I came out. It was wisdom.
Seawolf did it or not?
Who?
The Sea Wolves, the monkey thing?
No.
One by, okay.
I didn't.
They owe me, they owe me a trip out to soccer.
Okay, you know, that. Works well.
Said they would.
It was in a calendar schedule, cause we do a lot of things as well, so I think just, you know, when it comes to the youth, and we'll start having like the career pathway. Or uh, you know, STEM days and things like that coming out, and then, you know, just being involved with that uh with the youth. I think they get excited about it as well, just to know that there's other folks around there who say, hey, what's for it, you know? Tell me about, you know, what's going on, and hearing from them, right, the, the, the P.
Okay. Dr. Proctor said consistency is the key to effectiveness, let them know I'll definitely pull up. Does anyone else have anything, Jeff, anything?
Yeah, I just said, so when, you know, we were talking about kind of restructuring the, the College and Career Center, and we didn't seem to be able. That was a great concern, but having this, you all talk about your plans and everything, and the fact that you're gonna be there every day, and all that is, I don't have any concerns anymore. I think that's great, you filled in all the, all the holes that I was looking for, so look forward to when you bring here. Yeah, I know you can, I mean, making it a place, that's always been the key, to make it a place where, you know, folks can feel like they can come and be safe and. Talk about what you're doing and what they're not doing and so forth, so um, good job.
Well, thank you so much for being there, I know this was unexpected to be cast, but we really appreciate it, and I'm just gonna leave this.
Thank you, no, it's okay, I mean, I told you, Parker, as soon as the next part is done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see you, Shadr.
If we get it to you. All right, we'll see you then, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna move on, you know, in honor of time. Uh, so, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the board, uh, you don't have a hard copy of it, but on your uh information, you do have hard copies. Of the strategic plan work session, you actually have a hard copy in front of you, and you actually have a copy of the old or the current strategic plan. It's the one from last year that we developed, and um, and then your question running, but the new one that we developed is here, so point five. Twenty-eight, it, some of the language, many of the, much of the language, eighty to ninety percent language is the same, so there's not a lot of changes. Because I don't believe when you start a plan, you change it drastically, uh, but we're trying to get more precise. And we brought enough information to you in front of this, in work sessions, when we receive feedback and information. So I'm gonna go forward with the um, some of the changes, and this, this presentation just highlights the changes. That we put into the plan that's listed there, so people on, on your, uh, uh, you got the point five, twenty-eight plan. Uh, which is the um version that says draft, it's a draft, 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 it says twenty-five, twenty-eight. Uh, draft, 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 because I wanna make sure that people have that, but the presentation I have just highlights some of the key changes. I'm just gonna go through this high level, and I'm gonna hear people's thoughts, um, so uh, next page. Um, I'm just gonna skip some of these pieces because we found our mission and vision of the district many times. These are our values, uh equity, inclusion, respect, empowerment, excellence, and integrity. Uh, and then our anti-racist goals, I've already discussed that with everybody. And part, you'll see that called out in the plan as well. Um, and then that's where I want you to stop, that'd be perfect, thanks. So in front of you, um, you have the strategic plan analysis. So um last, so I'm just gonna get a little bit of history, especially for some of the board directors that started in November or after. Um, so I'm just gonna do how I entered for the foray of the work. Um, Director Larson probably has the most history for this, um, but when I was hired, um, there was. So a lot of work done on developing a strategic plan, so they had the CEE group do some work, the board had a document. It was like a Word doc online, and then there was a lot of community engagement that was done um around the work. Uh, and then one of the tasks I was given when I was hired was, okay, Dr. Rosa, you've got all these information, you have all this documentation. Do something with it. I'm gonna go do something. So I'm gonna share, this is a funny story, and it's not funny. So, which, so this is one of the things, when you have an outside group working on something, there's sometimes some disconnect, right? So, and it's really, it's, it's kind of, I still have my first meeting with my team, I'm ready to go. It's the first day, I remember I had all the team there, and I put the plan in front of them that the outside provider gave me. And I assumed they had worked on it, I assumed they had, you know, developed it, and they all looked at me and said, we can't assume this. Okay, hey, that's new information. All right, so we had to recruit. So I went back to the board and I said, okay, because I also went to a meeting with the board of directors and. We don't like some of these metrics, these don't feel techfula, these don't have a lot of information, and we didn't get rid of everything, but we decided to really dig at it. So we spent July, August really working on that of last year. And so the plan that we came up with is the old, is the plan that we worked off of last year, it's the one that we have a copy of, that is what we developed. And we really took that to heart, like, we're, we're gonna do this work, was it perfect? No. Um, and we also went to work with the principals, we have the community engagement, all of that work, and we went through the board. But what we, we decided to spend some time really educating the community on each of the goal areas, we spent a lot of work sessions. Um, we set metric based line data, um, really looking at where we wanna be and aspire to be. And I still think many of those goal areas are really necessary, and some of the pieces, but we also learned some things too. So that, so that work sessions were our opportunities to work on alignment between the plan and the schools. We really were building foundation, so I'd say last year was the year of building the foundation of the work. Um, we started to receive the preliminary data, this, so kind of fast forward to this summer. We started receiving some of the preliminary data on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and even a little before. Uh, the results from like the WIDA, the ESPA, the I-readies, you know, the progress monitoring, all of the, like, all those summary assessments. Uh, and I kept that, I remember that, it was funny, cause I'm walking around going, where's, where's the data? Kind of like you a little bit, like, where is it, where is it? So, uh, I was getting a little nervous in LA for a while, and, you know, finding out that we're not gonna really get it till even September, October. Uh, so anyway, we had that work session on August thirteenth, I thought this was. Uh, so anyway, we had that work session in August thirteenth, I thought this was an important time, though the board gave us feedback, uh, where they wanna see moving forward. Uh, also, we had feedback from the other work sessions, right? We learned, you know, how you're thinking about this, and we also got feedback from our schools. Right, how is this actually applying in our schools? Uh, and then what we did in August is we established a strategic plan work group to begin working on the analytics revisions and next steps. Uh, that analytic work group was led by Dr. Proctor. Uh, she led that work group and they met, but really, it was an opening invitation. So TOS's, um, principals were invited, the district administrators were invited, um, to come in and sort of look at this and look at the recommendations and feedback, and then present a draft, so this is a draft, so the, the one we're presenting to you is a draft. It is not the final, we're here to get feedback. And also even in terms of engagement recommendations and all of those pieces for next steps, because this is the draft we're gonna be sort of, um, moving forward for the next three years. Um, uh, one of the things I wanna talk about, and I'm gonna highlight something, uh, Director Larson mentioned, actually, not to, that you talked about targeted universalism a couple of times. So, uh, we decided, and early on, we were thinking about targeted universalism as well. We even talked about it last summer, to be honest. We talked about targeted universalism with the goals, like, for example, for ESPA, but because we had, we knew we had some work to do just in general to get build foundation, we made the decision last year not to do that and to keep and see how the data came out post-COVID, SEL, all of the, all of that information. So this is the definition of targeted universalism. And it's sort of a notion of you take, uh, when you have a problem of practice, for example, an all-practice, sometimes, you know, like those of you who work in mechanics, you know, you work on cars, you work on, you have the cars not working, so that's the big problem. But really, it's the starter, it's just you get down to the nitty-gritty, it's the starter that's not working, that's creating this whole habit, right? So that is, you have to fix the starter, like, what's the, right? And so we decided that we have to, and we, I shared the data last year. So our problem of practice, particular school district here, is Hispanic Latino students have been over-identified in special education, the problem of practice. Black and Hispanic Latino students have been under-identified in highly capable programs. Black students have higher disciplinary, I'm not saying anything you guys don't know, because you saw the data last year, we talked about it. Higher disciplinary referrals, not in all schools, but in most of our schools. Black and Hispanic Latino students are consistently underperforming, performing on district-wide assessments. And Hispanic Latino students are the highest number of multiple learners within the district, like, that's just the her best. And so when we looked at all of that, we decided that it was critical for us to sort of take that approach and target our goals more succinctly. I'm not, and so, and what I wanna be really clear, and I think this is what people need to understand really clearly, just because you take a targeted approach doesn't mean you're ignoring everybody else. I wanna state that, I'm gonna say that again. Because you're taking that targeted approach does not mean you're ignoring everybody else. Uh, and so that's critical. So I wanted to put that up front in here, and I'm gonna say it over and over again to people, because what'll happen is people say, but what about me, what about my kid? And we're not, we still have to look at the all, we still do, but what we're saying, in order to affect the all, we have to sort of, the, you know, the starter, we have to get at the starter, right? Because the car's not gonna work, right, our data is always gonna be underperforming. So that's part of the shift we're doing in terms of some of this practice.
And the other aspect of this, if you, if you raise up the, the students at the bottom, you raise all the world essentially, because then you have, you, you, we're spending less time doing remedial work and things like that, and then the whole academic environment moves up.
Yes.
When you do that.
Yeah, you're spending less time on remediation, more time on acceleration, right? And so that's the, right, and it benefits everybody, so that's the benefit, right? Like, when we heard, so just for example, an example of the homework problem practice, right? Like, we have this homework problem of practice where it's equity, you did it up, but what this parent is saying, and I, I really get this parent is saying, but my kid needs more, right? This, what about my kid? We have to figure that balance between high expectations and also supporting other way. So the, if we can focus and support our kids who are really struggling and lift them up, like that, like the tide, lifting up the boat, we're gonna get all our kids what they need. So we're gonna take that approach and really looking at, and that might mean we have to make our goals succinctly. We might mean we have to look at the data differently. It means that for tutoring program, or this, just like we did, I'll say for another example, summer school. We decided this summer, because we had limited resources, we're gonna target our newest learners, our newest to the country, our newcomers, because of the fact that we knew that if we didn't give them something this summer to support them, to lift them in, that we wouldn't be starting at even more of a deficit, they're gonna lose that learning, you know, on and on and on. So this is an approach we're taking, but we can't do it for everything, and so we are taking this targeted approach in terms of goals, at least our goals. The schools, though, will still have these as part of their goals, and most of this will be aligned. They may add another group, for example, if a school finds that their uh, Latino students, as well as their special ed students, are actually really struggling, they may add goals targeted for their school. So schools do have the, um, the option to, um, to add goals or streamline the goals a little differently, but we're seeing as a district, when we look at some of our resources and how we're supporting some of our thinking, this is what we're gonna focus on. And I will say, it's not a small number, when you guys saw the data, our MLO, like, five hundred students are those, the ones that enrolled. It's a large number, so it's, we still have to even think through that a little bit, too.
Yeah, the only, I mean, obviously, there's this huge intersection that you've identified here between special ed and between MLO and so forth. There's also the issue, um, and the reason I, is the McKinney-Natal students, because we have a lot of them and yeah, I think it's kind of important to put them in the mix, because they have kind of some unique situations that we might, you know, when you're targeted, when you're trying to target a group, you need, okay, what is the, what is the thing that's gonna work best for them? And so I think understanding that role, I think, is, is, is the kind of the one that seems to be a little missing here a bit.
Okay, I'm, I'm so sorry, MLO, it's MKV.
Yeah, MKV, right.
Sorry, hold on a second. MKV, McKinney-Vento are homeless popular, and our, and our number did exacerbate, a lot of, like, a percent of our population is homeless, and, um, also, and so it'll be interesting to see what our current numbers are, uh, based on, because we had some of our students move into other cities and, uh, we have less, but it'll be interesting to see what our percentage is for this year.
Twenty-five percent of our total students?
Of all of our students in techfula student, that's a quarter of our district was homeless last year, yeah.
Which means, you know, when you're talking about the whole, the whole issue, there's, there's students that may not have a place where they can do their work. And so then, you start talking about, you know, opening after school programs or, you know, weekend or whatever, so.
And we, I would keep track, um, because one of the sources, like, the lost students that influx into this, uh, system was the asylum camp. Now we keep track of that, but within a month, I believe the city wants to have that larger tent down. It's with sixty people to eighty people.
Yeah, no, we weren't very, so one of the things I will say, and I'm gonna say this very nicely. I, we were the best at tracking where our kids go. Perfect, okay. I'm gonna say, we got that now.
You can, I, I actually know that.
Yes.
It's a full and children's foundation.
Yes, we were the best at it. I would say blessings to Suzie Kelly, Julie Hurt, and Mary Ann Efto. They had it down, because, uh, every time, and so think about some of our students who had to move maybe three to five times in the year. We had to track where they were going, which hotel, which shelter, and we did it. We paid for it at no extra cost from the state. And we had to, that's, you know, it's also law, it's the right thing to do, and it's also law. And so, but our team, I would say those three, I would say those three women right there were the, uh, the, the tracking gurus for not only us, but for everybody that supported those students, including cities, and partnerships in community organizations. So I would say we were the, we are the ones, and I'm gonna, and I just, I'm just gonna state that, it's true. And we're very proud of it, so we know where all the kids are, so we definitely, uh, work on that, they communicate very closely with the church. Um, so we're on it, and we actually, I just had a conversation with Ms. Efto today, talking about the move and all of that. And to be honest, we actually have a group of students right now, and currently in hotels, that the church can't pay for, that just are gonna be in the process of being evicted. And so we're actually worried about those, right now, and so we're working on that too. So this is good to hear about the resource, because I didn't, I knew about the Urban League's research, I actually have donated to them for years, um, I knew about their, I knew about the research for homelessness, I didn't think about them in terms of support for us, so that's something we can work through. Anyway, uh, so back to the strategic plan. Um, so that's where we're heading towards, and, and we wanna get feedback from you all, because if it doesn't, if it feels like, no, just go back to the old ways, we just need to know and hear the rationale. Okay, so moving forward, uh, high expectations for all. So the right is actual data, that is data from the state, broken down by ethnicity, those are ESPA scores, are, are the main state tests, the ESPA scores, um, these is the data, um, and I'll be honest, um, I also look at the Native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islander group as well, as something that I was also thinking of just to add, as for, especially on this targeted one, just because it's actually a lower, uh, gap than actually other. It's also a smaller number, it's the smaller number as well, but I did wonder about that as well.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes unfortunately they get lost when we have a school built and there are animals underneath.
Yeah.
But when you look at it, they, they've always been one of the issues.
Yeah, and it's one of the things that we could actually make it even maybe, that they have it as a school goals too as well. So those are, that was a question mark I had here, to collect the data in front of you, uh, to get your feedback on. And so the goal, then the goal, we created the goal that, uh, targeting this in terms of having Hispanic, Latino, we can add that as a group to improve their scores in ELA math by ten percent. Uh, targeting specifically that group of students. Uh, and then also, and what we did also switch is, instead of having standalone goals as for I-ready, and I, we felt it was important last year, because I-ready was still kind of relatively new. Uh, but I was gonna, I'm gonna actually give a lot of kudos to Chief Whitbeck. He did a lot of work with I-ready team, he brought the I-ready folks to our schools, he did professional development, they did I-ready walks with all of the elementary folks and middle school folks. Uh, we have now, I think, got a good foundation for I-ready as, but it truly is a practice monitoring tool. It's not a finite tool, it's, it's a tool that's directly connected to our work with, um, this goal. They're aligned, the measures are aligned, it, there's a lot of research that shows their alignment to the work. And then now we actually have adopted I-ready mathematics curriculum, which is also now correlated. So the students will be instructed in mathematics and the same, uh, level. So we actually have a lot, all of it's lining up, right, in terms of those pieces. And I'm really, uh, hopeful that this year with the fidelity to the math program, that we're gonna see big juts in mathematics, uh, in that work. So I just wanted to share the goal with all of you and get any feedback on that too, as well, since we're standing and looking at this.
So I guess I would, so we've kind of gone back and forth with their science, I mean, specifically you said ELO and that, I would include science and sci- science was included in some of the previous ones.
Okay.
Partly because, I mean, we just heard from the Urban League, STEM, STEM, STEM. And I'm also, as, as I say, I've been concerned about particularly science at the elementary level. We have discrepancies between, and so I wanna focus on, I don't wanna lose focus on that, but I think that's really important. And, you know, that's another one of those systemic things, that unless we get, if we don't get science right in the elementary schools, then it just kind of flows up into the others, other, the secondary schools and, um, but, and at the same time, there's some good stuff going on there as well.
Yeah, no, we actually have.
I wanna keep track of it and make sure they're doing it.
Our highest, uh, S, our scores for science, we actually, remember we piloted the science curriculum last year?
Right.
And we actually adopted the science curriculum in science, that was our strongest area, by the way.
So for me, this is, I'm gonna screw, I'll turn around, you know, I'm just, I'm fine with what your goals are, five to ten percent. I think you're talking, you know, overall, possibly on that bottom, I'm not sure, it doesn't feel like the.
That's, that's actually a survey data for staff.
Okay, good.
That's a survey data, yeah.
When I, when I see the highest marks, kind of like, you got Asian kids who are from Harvard, thirty-six, and white kids are doing the same, this, this is my profise to me, even with my readers on.
Yeah.
So next time I'm prepared.
A little better, okay. I can't even give you the whole graph, I have it right here.
My point is, yes, ten percent or five percent, um, you know, I don't wanna say not to exceed thirty-six point whatever percent, but like with, it, there's, I wanna get them like, the sky's the limit here.
Yeah, this guy is the one that.
It's like, minimum, you wanna get to some.
Maybe we should say meet or exceed.
Yeah, because that, yeah, say something like that, um, because otherwise, people perform to, you know, the goals you set.
Got it.
And I feel like, for me, I'm back in English, paying easy, and language, um, you know, when I was teaching the Old English Language and Shakespeare, et cetera, I did get it done, but then metered right, then it might, I just give up, right? So I don't know what every guy's little trigger is, but I would have said, been dragging me into Eng- English, all English type courses. I'm just like, oh my God, here I go again, I, I, how do I love the how I count the ways? But I don't understand what's going on here, and I don't get why ESPA is a genius. So it seems to me, um, you've got it all figured out, you all made a doctorate degree. But you, you must know where like, you know, for me, even mathematics, I, I fell in love with calculus once I understood, you know, uh, accounting, using it for accounting purposes and the key related funds. Uh, which we used it to apply in things, I did great, and I'm just saying, everybody learns differently, you know that too, but, um, it just seems like, we've talked about it a lot, I don't know if you figured it out, you know, what are, what are, we talk about five ways things, if the whole people back on it, why particularly these, these particular groups, um, and culture, why, why they aren't doing as well? Is it because they don't wanna do it, but I can't believe that's true? They're not turned on with, they're not cool, they can be good at, because everybody can be good at.
I think this is historical, um, there's also, um, low expectations.
Exactly.
Uh, right, so that's what you're getting at, I think there's lack of role models, right?
That one is, that kind of.
There's a lack of role, they, so they've actually, I'll just share, there's actually a research article that says, um, that for, and I shared this with folks before, there's a research article that says for every, um, student that represents you, a teacher or staff member that represents you in the building, in the elementary level, guarantees you getting to middle school successfully, or, and the same for middle school, guarantees, and, you know, all of that. So it's just, it's just, uh, we're the role models, not just in one school, in all of our schools. And I will say, I have actually sat in staff meetings before, last year when I was doing the budget meeting, and I, and I, I was looking around, waiting, like, as people were trickling in, going, am I the only person of color here? Right, like, and then more people come in, and you're like, but it's still a really small number, when you think about some of our schools. And so, um, there's still work to do, right? I would say our high school is the most reflective of our student. Our high school's doing really well, right? We have really good leadership, we have, uh, good teachers, we have teachers represent the kids. Our middle school's getting there, it doesn't have as much representation, so that's one piece of it too, but it's high expectations. And then also. And, you know, but, and we have complex needs, we have a lot of MLO kids, a lot of homeless. Both factors also, like, tripled, doubled some of this as well, but it's not an excuse, because we see many kids. And I will say to elementary, if we can do the magic in elementary, because our, well, the kids somehow, by middle and high school, they're making it, right? And they're seem to be getting it, they're becoming, going to Emory, and they're going to all these other places, and they're making it. But I still remember Dennis sitting here, Dennis, our student rep last year, he's from Vietnam, and I still, it still hurts my heart when he says, I was a strong math kid in Vietnam, but because of my English, I was, I felt and was kind of treated like I wasn't.
True, right.
Because of my English, the English was mapping what people thought I could do. And I think that's a little bit of what's happening too. I call it, uh, we do a good job as techfula about taking care of a whole child, right? But that also means academics, right? And so sometimes I think we forget that sometimes, I'm not saying they don't, but we're so focused on the, like, the needs, the basic needs, sometimes that, but we gotta shift it to the academics. And that means we need to focus in and double down on our MLO kids, double down. Uh, I think we have good strategies in place, but we've gotta double down, because there's something going on. And then when we do that, we can really figure out what is the, the issue. But the kids are motivated, every parent I talk to, they want their kids to succeed and do well. And they want all their kids to be, do better than them.
Yeah.
Always, that's, I've never heard a parent not say that to me. Um, but I think sometimes the kids, when they're smart kids, especially our, uh, English language learners, super smart. And then they come here, and then they just feel like, like. Yeah, because everything's in English, everything's, you know, people are speaking really fast, and we are a society that judges intellect by how well people speak. Uh, yeah, because everything's in English, everything's, you know, people are speaking really fast and we are a society that judges intellect by how well people speak. It's just the treatment.
The other good thing is, is that curriculum, we've seen it over the years. We, when we get the curriculum right and teach it with fidelity, all of a sudden, everybody.
Yeah, from the second you tell them that, let you know a language that I don't know, and if you can figure out English, you're gonna be bilingual.
Yeah, and that's the reason why, that's why we started our building. Like, so we just started that near here, and I'm really excited to see that take off. We started heritage language classes, but these are all things we just started. We just started them last year. We're in year two of our bill language program. I think we've got good strategy. It's gonna take us a couple of years to see. Some of like, just like we said, with, you know, Brooklyn Parker, they just started the goal for high school beyond, I'm telling you. The metrics were low and we're putting the bar high. Uh, we also wanna make sure that we.
You're clearly doing a good job. These are perfect goals. I just wanna throw out the work Empire learners and say, back in the sixties and seventies, nobody talking about. Multi billionaires who were nervous, who are interested.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, right? So I, uh, the empire deserves to be fifty thousand stories, uh, the time Dean Brown.
Yeah.
Jackson, anybody else, those, those long, long are blaming on the, on our faculty, but they should know that they're out there and these are people with quite the same problems. And come out on top because they've chased the particular part.
So, uh, we'll get.
There are the people who criticize.
Yeah. But I think, so we'll have to make sure it's meet or exceed. I think that's important.
Thank you.
And we'll keep the schools high and people leave that too. That's why like the high school beyond, and that's the tricky part. We don't wanna also overwhelm our, you know, school, but we wanna make sure we set realistic goals as well.
Yeah, that's why it's a little bit tricky because.
Yeah.
The math, let me say, uh, increased by ten percent. Well, if you start at a really low level, like if you're, you know, on the twenty percent. So you gotta get into the, sometimes it should be ten percentage points, not ten percent.
Yes.
So we, we're more than ones who actually do move the needle.
Yeah, we do.
The teachers do.
Yeah, no, the teachers, no, we do, uh.
Students.
Uh, we do already, like, uh, we do an I ready end of the year when the students meet. So what the other part that we need for I ready was, which we wanted to launch was. The students also need to own it. So the I ready stretch goals, the students make those goals.
Okay.
Like they make the goals and say, this is where I'm at, and this is my goal. We at the end of the year, I mean, stop with the popsicle candy. All right, scared. We have popsicle party.
Sugar flow.
At all the schools, hey, popsicle candy.
Other popsicle.
I got candy right here. Don't pinch them.
Back in the day, you guys still do this? When I was in elementary, they actually have now certificates for kids with perfect.
Yeah, we've done that too, too. We do.
The most things you would know.
Little things, pencil, you know, little pencils, the, the cake, heck, well, uh, elementary school, all of that stuff. So we do. So that, that, so we're still looking at uses I ready, but we already have it systematized. So we have it already part of our goals. So we took it out of the goal area because it's now part of our system. Uh, we took, we don't want a million goals, but took it out, but it's still gonna be as a progress monitoring because it's in alignment and you'll still get those reports. Uh, okay, I, anything else? Just wanna make sure. Do I have any feedback on the native, uh, Hawaiian, other Pacific Islander group? If you wanna add that or any other thoughts? I just make sure I.
I feel like they need a lift. I can't, I don't want the evidence, but we definitely, we should, you know, if they're not in there.
Okay.
And we don't mention what we want them to do, right? It seems odd.
Okay.
I don't wanna also put.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a star right here and then we'll take it to the team and go. Okay, thank you. I'm excited, please. Engage learners. So we put two specific changes to the goals here, uh, and then just letting you know, um, we also are requiring all schools improvement plans. So every school has, so this is our district version of the plan. Every school has. A school improvement plan. So one big change we did from last year to this year is all of the school improvement plans need to add three things to their plan. An anti-racist goal, a discipline goal, and an attendance goal.
Okay.
So those are the three we added.
Those are the attendance.
Attendance. So an attendance goal, discipline, and an anti-racist goal. So it's got a message in it. Okay, I got it. I got, you know, you say, you think, we need to add this, and then that's also like work with the principal, and you're like, we did it, right? We did it, right? We gave it that, right?
I mean, one thing I've noticed, attendance is the much bigger issue at the secondary schools and elementary schools, so, um, for whatever.
Yeah, no, it's true. I mean, attendance issues in the elementary school are more about the parents. Attendance issues in secondary, more about the kids. Just being honest. I was a K, of a K five principal, I was a K eight principal, and I was a six twelve principal. I know it all. I know who, I know who's coming in all she, she's, sorry, I got people, sorry, Mr. Jordan, sorry, Miss Cotty, which is a parent in the elementary. And so one of the things is working on student field thing. I, so we are actually having a conversation first. I just wanna catch this here. We're keeping C E E data. Uh, cause this is the C E data. Yeah, so the first one, students feel safe and supported at school. And have positive relationship with peers. And so we're gonna, uh, we're gonna target that and we wanted to make sure that we target our discipline data as well. Cause we saw the data last year as the same group that was struggling. So we're gonna have a targeted goal around that. Uh, so that's one of the goal areas that we're going, and the schools are gonna have goals around that. So just share that with all of you. And then the last one on this one is the percentage of fourth and twelfth grade responding positively to the E E S survey. In collaboration and personal skills will improve from sixty six percent to more than seventy two percent. So it's green. So greens here means that we, so if it's green here, it means that we actually increased our goal. So we made it, but it didn't, uh, attack and meet our goal or exceed our goal, but we did increase our goal. So sixty six percent. Um, I put it here, so to the right, to you here. So we had, um, that's a. This is a subset of this, the, the one goal here, I put a subset here. See, so I picked this one and I put in front of you. A survey response, but it's something we can actually deal with right away as a system. We as a system can work with our principals. And so I picked this one question out. Students are involved in solving problems in this school. Uh, this is one subcomponent of this overall goal, like taking that targeted approach. This is something we can do. Our students are seeing they don't feel like they can probably solve in their schools. We can work with our principals to support this. If you see it's going down sixty three, fifty nine, fifty eight. So students have less agency. And I think our student advisory, this is data we can give to our student advisor. So I just broke that down and showed you an example of like a question that if we could solve this. That'll actually increase, even though we increase it, it could increase it quite a bit if we could solve it. Cause this was our lowest performing issue and it's actually one we can take on right away.
Another one that's, is really why I, I follow a lot is that there's some question about do students respect each other?
Yeah.
This gets to the whole bullying issue, which has been an issue continually for a long time. So that's one I'd really be interested in.
Yeah. Okay.
And I think students, students, well, just back to the student advisory.
Yeah, yeah. So I think getting this, some of this data from the kids, our student advisory group would be really helpful. The next one was the desired outcome. Students consistently attend their classes. So this is part of the plan where we're having the schools make a goal around that too. Right? So the attendance, but we're gonna monitor that as well. And then of course, college planning, um, focusing on more targeted high school and beyond plans, and you heard their goals and they wanna exceed ninety five percent as well. So you already heard that already. All right, next slide, relationships. Uh, students feel connected and supported by their school community, accepted for who they are. And so I pulled out this one percent piece of data here that there's, this one I thought was really critical. Um, it's counting on back and forth, but we didn't, you know, this subset, uh, we did improve overall on belonging and identity. So sixty, it's in green. That means we went up. Yay. It's all bad news, everybody. It's still good news. Uh, actually had a lot of green stuff, which was good. We also had some red. We had some red, we had some green. Uh, but, uh, this is also something we can take on right away with our staff, right? There's at least one adult in this boy I can talk to if I have a problem. So it went from seventy four percent, that was, you know, post COVID, uh, it went from, so sixty nine percent to seventy percent again. So it's kind of like flat town areas. But that's something we can work with our schools to let them know, show this data and actually have them take that on as the goal. And then that's super simple is. Having schools saying, no, we'll work on our advisory, we'll work on our connectedness, making sure that every kid has somebody or somewhere that they can go to. And maybe it's not the staff. Maybe some students will feel more connected to one of our partner groups, right? Or maybe it's a volunteer, but. The point is, is our students should be able to have an adult in our school that they can go to. That can, that's an easy fix we can do. And then I love that the, the, the teachers and principals really took this percentage of families to attend conferences. We could, we established our baseline. So we'll work with the schools. We're gonna move that to the school improvement goals, but. Uh, but we're gonna also target our Hispanic Latino families. Uh, and a reason why I'm doing that is because. We lost some of our community liaison, as you know, but we need to make sure that we double down our efforts and making sure that they have voice. Cause lots of them are multilingual learners and making sure that their voices are included. And that we do a better job of translating materials and all of those things. I think we have resources to help, but we can always do better in that area. And then, um, and then here just to share with you, we took out the goal around communication survey because we're launching a new communication survey. So once that gets launched, then we'll establish a goal area and that, that was a, we had a survey in the past about how we communicate. And we're gonna revamp that. So just wanted to share that with all of you. And then any thoughts on that, hey, relationships, sorry, before I move on?
Yeah, I was at another, this guy had with the parent at the open house at Foster was about communicating, um. So she was concerned about communicating in relation to, uh, like the safety, the lockdowns and all that. There's still some confusion about what that, how that works. And then. Also, um, this was somebody who was like a, a new, new student into Foster High School and. The, there seemed to be a, a little confusion. She's actually registered, but then she went to church, she actually got registered. So then. Then I came to getting on the bus. She didn't really know if the student was gonna be allowed on the bus or not. And so there, there was kind of, it, it seemed like there was an opportunity for some automatic. Maybe, and I don't know if we have systems that do that, but automatic feedback, as soon as you get registered, you get an email, yeah, you're registered fully. You're just getting on the bus, whatever it is, you know, just like parents. Parents know, um, what's going on.
That's probably at the school level.
Yeah.
That's what actually Amy's working on. Actually, she's having meetings with the office man. So in the past, we had a stipend position for communications at the school that was connected. And that wasn't working as well this last year. So she revamping that and we're looking at, we're still have a stipend. But she's now using the office managers too and including the office manager. So they're doing some trainings and some work, making sure everyone still has some new office managers. So new staffs are trying to make sure everyone's on the same page on expectations for communication.
Yeah, it's apparently like this, went to the Foster staff, like the bus and the, the board was, well, just show up with us. Well. No, I mean, your bus driver is not gonna let somebody who's sending a list on the mess. That's a big no, no. So, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? Okay, equity and empathy, uh, are the goals that staff will know students by name, strength, culture, and need. Which will ultimately contribute to a sense of belonging. Um, one of the things I pulled out the survey and I really targeted these two survey results in our C E E. And we'll talk about what we're gonna do mid-year around C E E moving forward for mixture. I have some ideas, excited about, but we'll go get there later. We still gotta. Finish off our contract with C E E this year. So, but, um, I have this, uh, I feel, oh, I looked at a D. They got a new, sorry, D. I'll have to put that in here. Dude, I need to check my certain resources. Uh, I take, I should feel good about my cultural or ethnic background. Uh, that's pretty good. We're doing pretty good there. The kids are saying, yeah, I do. It's improving. But the school has effective equity practice that didn't involve, no. Like, so the good news is the student self is feeling great about who they are in terms of their cultural identity. Yay, us. Yay, kids, yay, parents. Yeah, yay, community. But they're saying the schools aren't doing a good job. So that's something we have to, hopefully, hopefully with our, some of our anti-racist schools, we can affect change.
Yeah, the student advisory committee I was in set, they were, um, talking about that. And part of the issue is for some of those students, particularly the multiracial students.
Yeah.
They're trying to, you're going through that phase, trying to figure out who you are, what I'm and, and they have some comments about, you know, we've done culture days around here for a long time and they have. A bunch of comments for how to do that a little bit. Anyway.
And we can actually use our students to kind of affect this change.
Yep.
Or what does that look like equity for all? Anyway, so I thought that was an interesting data point to talk to you guys about. This is the data and this is what's happening. And so we're getting better here, but we're getting. Little worse here. So just, but I'm glad our kids are feeling good about themselves. But if they're not seeing themselves in our, in our curriculum, if they're not seeing themselves in our staff. If they're not seeing themselves reflected in some of the events, then that's a problem. So we need to work on that. So.
How do we know our staff knows the students by name, strength, culture, and need? How do we know if they do it more or less? How do we know if, you know, what the student scale is on, you know, right, you know, effective equity practices? Is it because they won't see any or not communicate as well? Or is it we're not doing them?
Well, that's what, that's what I think, that's what I think would be helpful with getting the students in, for giving this, putting this data in front of students. And actually having them make sense with some of it. I would, yeah, but all of it, it's very overwhelming.
Yeah.
Survey is huge.
Yeah.
And there's too many questions. I'll say that for the record for everybody. It's just too many. Um, but I, I'm wholly pulling out some of the ones that really stand out to me and actually thinks that we can do something about right away.
Okay.
That we can take action on right away. So these are the ones I pulled out. And then I'm gonna add, make sure the participation AP owners that we had running start in there. I think it was in number four, but somehow that left off. So we'll make sure and add that in there. Running start in that one. And then, uh, uh. And then also, uh, you wanted to change the M L L one on growth. Is that what you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just think it's a better measure and it's, it's kind of automatically with Weta and.
Okay.
Um.
We'll talk about.
I mean, you can, you can have potentially both, but I think growth is some of a bigger fan.
I'm a bigger fan of growth too. So that's why I love I ready, because it's all about growth, right? With the kids. Okay, we'll look at that and we'll update them. We'll send that to you guys. Okay, and I just added this slide for the next one on equity and empathy. Um, get next slide, please. Um, so these are some of our three goals. As you know, we put, um, Director Burdo in charge of equity. And so she's actually already worked on our equity policy. Uh, we are gonna be submitting that to the board. She has a whole procedural guidance document for everybody, everybody, including me. And, uh, we have our, uh, uh, statement and then, so these are the three goals for this year. Strengthen racial equity leads. Um, so this year, what they're doing this year, which is really exciting, is our equity leads meet once a month. And then, uh, twice, our student reps from our student advisory board are gonna meet with them. And then three times in the year, our school leaders, all the principals are gonna meet with our, we said, we're trying to remember that alignment, make sure we're aligned in the work. Amplify student voice, which is still the work that we need to do, right? The feedback sessions, student advisory boards. School-based equity teams and ensuring students are perspective, um, on district board policy and then leadership equity, professional development. Uh, all district leader, and we count leaders like, not just district leaders, school leaders, but TOSAs, we have department leaders, all of this work because. Um, when there's not alignment in terms of goal setting, understanding, accountability. Any, if, well, you said, or when it's not aligned, then that's where things, then, then you can see very clearly where those anomalies happen. Um, and I will be honest, um, we have a lot of people. Who are still new. Like I said, last year was the first year we required everyone to participate. So you have people who've been doing this work for three to four, five years, six years. They do good for professional development outside of the district. And then last year we had people that were literally like breaking from a fire hose last year and feeling overwhelmed and, oh, my gosh, I'm making a mess up and. I don't wanna say the wrong thing and this is really hard and are people gonna look at me and think I'm this way when I'm not like, oh, that's not, and that's real. Those are real feelings. Uh, so we're doing a lot of that work to support those leaders that are just entering into the conversations, entering into the work. And really helping them along and making sure that we are taking, um, a not judgment stance on people's, the third journey on the work, making sure that we support. We provide guidance and that we build up the people that are supporting them too, um, so that they can still do the work alongside us. So I'm a firm believer of you don't get to this work with shame and blame. I never have believed in that at all. Uh, I don't believe, well, then walls go up and then walls grow up, then you have resistance, you have passive resistance, you have even aggressive resistance. Or you have to silent resistance, right? And so I, that has never, I've never seen that work well. Ever in my, I've been doing this a long time. I've never seen it work well. I don't believe in shame and blame. I believe in starting where people are at. And helping people along the way. And so that means we have to build a cadre of people to support that. I will share, we just finished our first session with the Compania Network on the restorative practices. And every building has three, three, at least three or more, two to three, uh, leaders. They've all come back and have reported, it was amazing. Um, even people here who went said it was amazing. And in fact, I had a couple of foster high school teachers and a middle school teacher all approaching me and say, how can I do it? So that means word spreading, that it was really powerful and really good. So that's amazing as well. So we're starting, it's great. But then that work is focused on healing and restorative and so. And that's where I think the villa has to be, because let's be honest, we had a year of reckoning this year. We need to really support healing and.
So please, you said they're gonna padre.
The Compania Network. The Combinator Network. That's the group that, from that we did with, remember the All-Sat Kipon? The, the.
Oh.
Maya's video, that's his network.
Okay.
Yep, and he actually, he has a framework and restorative practice framework that we're working in, Piquet Sound E S D.
Okay.
And we sent, I think, twelve people, did we, how many people did we send?
Yeah.
Fifteen, fifteen people, fifteen. So we basically wanna make the district admin covered and then every school building covered and had at least, at least minimum two people on staff. So now you have a team of people. They're gonna still work, now they're not yet ready to launch and do really restorative work yet, but they're not circle keepers yet. But they're on the path and they're really excited. And now I have people asking me if they can do it. Which actually surprised me because how can I be involved? And I'm like, oh, that's great. We're skipping out. That means it's a really powerful day. So those are our goals as a district. Next slide.
Yeah, that's kind of interesting because Foster taking several runs in restorative practices over the years and you have them currently really.
No, the, the way you do it is you have people in the buildings. That's all the way to work. So, and then you have district people here also who've been trained and really understand the work as the holders of the work, right? That's the other thing that has to happen. So just, these are systemic challenges to honesty is the best policy here. District budgetary shortfalls over the next two years, right? We still are dealing with that. We still have to cut staffing over next year. Sorry. We're noticing, you know, we've had highly trained staffing reductions. Have highly trained staffing reductions. So teachers that have been invested in our system, leaving our system, right? Either voluntary or not voluntary, right? And and we, we invested a lot of time and resources into developing them and they work with their kids, right? So that's an impact on our schools, but we're still working on filling those gaps. HR's on it, right? Funding, so I'm gonna be, one of the things I'm worried about just down the road is funding down the road for ELA curriculum. We haven't had one for, I'm just gonna put it on the table. We haven't had one for a while. I think one that's hyper-focused on MLL learners would be really critical for us with that expertise. I, I know we don't have the money now. I'm just putting it on my wish list, just calling it and putting it on here for Teckola School District. I don't think, we've seen how quickly, right, our data improved with some of the science curriculum. We're gonna be looking at our data for math. I, I just think ELA is gonna have to be our next big thing, especially for K five. And then supporting impact for, from increased MKB students, um, making eventual students and ensuring their needs are being met. I sure, I should, I will just be really honest. I was at Friday at the superintendent meeting, convening with the Pierce County and King County Superintendents. And her superintendent, Rachel was there. And I really explained to her, because they were talking about, well, everyone used to get used to lower enrollment. I said, okay, we had higher enrollment last year with students with super complex needs. And we need that we could not completely meet all the time in the shade. So that's not the answer. What, you know, I'm still saying, you know, enrollment's the answer, or adjusting to enrollment is not the answer. We had increased enrollment and we still have increased needs, triple needs, quadruple needs, trauma, you know, on and on. And I just listed all of them. And I said, so, I go, that is not accurate. And we need more because we do more and our kids need more. And so just being really like, and transportation. We have to, if they move five times, we have to transport them. Those are all unfounded things. And so I was very clear that that is, doesn't solve all of our issues. And I also mentioned the hypothermia on lap as well. Making sure that they understand, do not take away from our district to fund other districts. That's not the answer. So.
And the good news is transportation first special, slipping off that too, which is my, is on, is on, I'm on everybody's list.
Yeah.
That is, is on list, but very degrees, but anyway.
But these are the big issues, the big things. But I will, but there's always hope, right? So the next slide is the good stuff. So next slide's the good stuff. But these are our opportunities, right? So we, we really have now school alignment to our strategic plan. And if you look at all of the school improvement plans, they're aligned to the work. And guess what? Us telling them to do the three goals, we started that conversation in the spring. It's happening, right? So we have that alignment. I think we're gonna, we laid the foundation last year. Now it's about working the plan. We have an anti-racist statement for the entire district and we have now procedures and we're gonna have a policy. This is exciting. Universal design for learning. That doesn't take, it takes training and support and we're still working on that in our MTSS system frameworks to launch. We're implementing the middle school left aids curriculum. Thank you, school board, for adopting that. Thank you for the math I Ready curriculum. And then we have honors for all. That's also leveling up high expectations in the high school in microjars. Aligning our street data framework to our assessments and reporting. So we're looking at making sure and talk about satellite data, you know, street data, all of those pieces. And then continuing our partnerships with the partnerships like the Urban League Belong Partners.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll leave you that.
Yeah, we should have added this to the list, but I'm just, that was just a small highlight of some partnerships, but we have some, we had to whittle down some of them and we had to re, but the people, everyone that we said, look, we have to do less with next year, said, okay, let us, let us help you. And we're getting told, for example, Algea Shore Belong Partners, they on their own went and got a grant. And their grant is to support Teckola School District. That was the information I shared. So we gave them our money, but they said, we can do more. Let's get a grant and support Teckola School District. Special Olympics, we have a grant for you. You know what I'm saying? So people who wanna work with Teckola School District and this, the schools and the leadership are working with us. So those are the bright spots, right, for us that we've gotta just continue to build off of that. So there's still a lot of good. And we're starting to implementing these new curriculums. They're, they're jumbled, they're new. So that's the piece about our teaching and learning and our school leaders ensuring that we're really implementing those in the right way. We're supporting teachers and helping them get on board and making sure they have enough curriculum, all of those pieces. So I think there's a lot of bright spots. And I feel like we're heading in the right path. And I will share, I'll share, I had a couple people come up to me at that event. And I've talked to all the principals. They said it was a smooth, smooth start to the year. Operationally, it was smooth. And then I also share one. One of our counselors came up to me and said, this is, I felt, had felt the most calmest start to the year. I feel like I have a strong leadership team. We're moving in the right direction and it just feels great. That's to me, it's like, dude, well, it's huge because, let's be honest, it, it was rough. It was rough. It was really rough. And I know it was rough. It was rough for us. It was rough for schools. It was rough for teachers and people lost friends and on and on and colleagues and partners, working partners and on and on and on. It's, it was rough. I'm not gonna, we can't sugarcoat that. It was rough. And the people are still reporting that it was a smooth start to the year. We still have some hiccups. We're still working on a few things, but I, I just wanna share that. So any thoughts on the strategic plan, please? Is the moment, any answers or feedback, things you wanna see, things we need to change? I, I put the old plan in front of you too as a guidance. You could compare it. Any thoughts?
So I just wanna say on the, on the grants, so this is one thing I heard from Lashley, oh, why don't you just, just gotta get grants? And then, and our response is, yeah, we're doing, you know, we're doing that. But it's not enough. I mean, also grants are, are, they could come and go and.
They're one, they're only.
Yeah, yeah, mistake, you guys. It's, it's not an excuse for you guys. Not so good.
Well, or you can get a grant, like we have one, I was about to talk about it, like, it's such a piddly amount of money.
Yeah.
And then the requirements for us, it requires a person.
Yeah.
So the money's not even to cover that. And there's thirty-five outcomes they want to report on that, nothing to do with, anyway. So it's a lot, basically not all money is good money. Not all money is good money.
No, we're definitely pursuing that. I don't, yeah.
This is, what's the little, what's the little carrot, that's the superintendent on the structure?
It means the carrot, you can look underneath, it mean, or the carrot, I don't know. Oh, if you look down below, I think there's a B below.
Oh, okay. So it's like an asterisk.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, I think you look here.
All right.
The carrot means, oh, the carrot underneath.
You're right.
It points up because I report to the board of directors. Cause you're there. Oh, the carrot denotes supervisor of middle and high school. That's what it means. So that's a little, so the carrot means I'm the supervisor of the middle and high school. And then the asterix mean, the one carrot means denotes supervisor of elementary school. So it's basically the same superintendent, secondary, of C A O Elementary. And then the asterix denote newly assigned areas of work. So if you look here on the org chart. There's lots of them. So Scott's taken on three. We have director here that's taken on two. We have, you can just see them all. All, everybody's taken on, even our new department. And believe me, I met every one of them and said, don't leave and you're gonna take all the homework, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
And you know, yes. That's, that's amazing. And, and just, I will say for the team here, people don't know this, but you know, we're also doing furlough days. Every one of us are doing furlough days and it's a lot, but they're doing, they're doing more work and.
When, when did that go back to you? Cause I didn't notice that in our budget thing, but I didn't.
This summer, we made a decision this summer, after looking at our budget and looking at, we still had a little bit of a shortfall. So that was Plan E. We have Plan A and a Plan B and we're still initiating some of that. So.
So like every party or?
No, it's not. It's, so the senior leadership team has ten to twelve days. So we're taking one a month.
Okay.
Directors right now are taking five. We're working with our principals on determining that step and we have others, some staff that are below that. And I'll remind everybody, our union members actually took less IPD this year as well. Everyone's doing their part. It's, it's a hard, and what I'm not gonna lie, it's a hardship for, for sound, for sure. And we have to own that.
So I guess the one thing I'd comment overall in this document is the, so you kind of, in the second section, you know, the, where the hypothesis goes, I I didn't really, you kind of map together goals and metrics.
Yeah.
Into the same. I, I personally prefer the other one where metrics are kept different goals. And I, and we lost, you know, you kind of referenced it, we lost some, some, some metrics in there.
Yeah.
Which I think were kind of important, particularly in the section around academics.
Okay.
I mean, the focus, we had a focus on like third and, third and seventh grade students, the expectations goals, which kind of got lost. I mean, third grade, instead of we keep going back, third grade reading is the critical, you know, at that, then seventh grade. And so I would, I would prefer the other.
On the high academics part?
Yeah, the high academics part. That's the, I think the most of the, some of the other ones got kept in here very soon. That one.
The goals, the goals and the metrics, okay. All right. The outcomes, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, the old thing had, you know, metrics on one and then they had the specific goals following that, which I think makes a little more sense. Other than national.
All right. On that, okay. Any other thoughts on the plan overall? Like your anti-racist goals.
Feel like we should look for our goals in one hundred three R's basically on the board. So.
That says then?
Obviously, if that's part of your name.
I like the, I can support some of the changes in, in the rationale. I feel like I'm at a disadvantage because I, I don't have it in my hand. So I'm gonna yield to you all. I was tracking, but sounds good. Yeah, yeah, please.
We'll get you one or two. Yeah. Anybody else? I hope so this time. So, and please email me too, cause this isn't done. It's a draft. So even sometimes people go home and go, I think this, email me directly and give me your feedback. Jeff, do I send you to, if you have some feedback, just email it to me. You wanna write it down, email me. Or just text me too, if you have an additional thought, it's fine. Just let me know so that I can encompass that. And so when we're still finalizing things, we can come together and.
Give us the timeline, what you want.
I would like, so I would love to have this ready to go within, definitely before the end of the, the, the month. So if you, yeah, so if I can get something from all of you, if you look at it maybe in a week, before the next board meeting is a good frame. How about that? I could do two weeks.
Yep.
After getting something before the next board meeting. So then I can at least send it to you as, at least as a finalized version to send to you all to review. Okay?
Director, for how this, I know she's out, but.
Yeah, she, we sent it to, but I'll text, she, you know, they, they are on vacation in Italy. I'll text them and let them know to look at it and any feedback they wanna give or support. We'll, I'll make sure they do that. Even remind me. And run me down. Thank you. All right, I tell me Michael of time. I'm really bored. All right. Nice conversation and discussion. Thank you. All right, so I guess, with you?
Moving on, are we good? Everything? No more questions? So we are now going to public comment. Correct. So we're now moving into the public conversation. If, if you are attending in person, I'd like to make a public comment. You can sign on the public comment signing sheet, but I'm pretty sure we all know each other here. See anybody new, for those who are attending online, raise your hand or type your name in the chat section.
Hello? Someone you's cautioning in Italy? I volunteer to take the draft over there personally. That's my service to the district.
Good to know.
Do we have anybody? No, nobody. So now. Okay, if there's nothing, no comments, I've moved to a chair. Oh, okay.
Is there anything I need to sign today?
Oh, okay.
Yes, a letter.
All right.
You have a letter being sent to the, to the state that, for the market now that you wanna sign that.
I'm on my way.
Okay, you wanna do it today or you wanna do it tomorrow?
I'm not gonna have time tomorrow.
Okay. All right, okay.
All right, here I go.
All right.
By the time we can do it.
Okay, that's, okay, all right. Oh, thank you. And here.
Okay, on finger.
Hi.
Yay. Okay, so move. We are, this session is over.
It's your kind of pleasure. So I'm gonna show you some.
Great job, Charlie.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, don't act like we didn't do that thing.
He did, yeah, he did a good job.
Hey, don't act like we didn't do that thing.